Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Monday Nights. This is April the 21st at 5:30, and this is our budget workshop, our first budget workshop. So, very good. Number two, we'll just do a roll call, I'll just do the roll call. Councilmember Bedford.
Here.
Councilmember Bencini.
Here.
Councilmember Maldonado.
Here.
Councilmember Busciello.
Here.
Vice Mayor Adam. And I am here, Councilmember Neil will be late, I believe, so unless he's joining us online, and I didn't see that he is. So, very good. Item number three is our call to the public. Call to the public for public comment on issues within the jurisdiction of the town council. Council rules limit public comment to three minutes. Individual council members may respond to criticism made by those commenting, may also ask staff to review a matter raised, or may ask that a matter be put on a future agenda. However, members of the council shall not discuss or act on any matter during an open call to the public unless the matters are properly noticed for discussion and legal action. So, is there anyone in the audience that wants to speak to, call to the public? Seeing none, and seeing none online, I'm going to close the call to the public. Item number four, our fiscal year 2025-2026 budget work session. I'm going to hand this off to Mr. Carl.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. We're excited for you guys to be here tonight, and we're excited to present the 26 Town Manager's Budget, and look forward to your feedback. The agenda will review the budget calendar, a little budget summary overview, and then we will discuss the property tax levy and its options, compensation adjustments, and both of those items, we're seeking council's consensus. Then we will review the general fund, and talk about the street funds, and other major fund, fund balances, and then close it out with any department questions, and review the departmental CIPs, and the directors are here tonight, should you have any questions. And I also wanted to thank Councilmember Adam and Councilmember Bencina, they were on the budget committee, and that was very helpful. They asked good questions, and it makes us stronger. So, we met as a budget committee March 25th through the 27th. Tonight is the first budget work session. We have one scheduled for tomorrow night, and Thursday night, should we need that. Wednesday night was unavailable because of P&amp;Z. We'll be back next week on May 6th with the tentative budget for adoption, return for June 3rd for the final budget adoption, and back on June 17th to adopt the tax levy. I just want to start off with some things we don't know. Economic uncertainty. I think it's safe to say that the economy is strong, the state of Arizona is strong. That doesn't necessarily mean that the Florence revenues will be strong. So, there's impact of federal policies, federal grants, is inflation going to take a turn, housing rates, housing correction, and if those two happen, what will the impact be on building permits and engineering fees? And we also have state legislation issues, state shared income tax, state shared sales tax, and the HERF funding, which we're highly dependent on, all three of those. Transportation infrastructure, we have a lot of projects, and funding sources, HERF and TET are not going to cover them, so in FY26, we need to discuss some funding sources. And water and wastewater, again, a lot of CIP projects, especially at the wastewater plants, and we don't know the true revenue requirements that will be needed to fund those, once the new directors on board can thoroughly vet the CIP that we have in the plan, and we will most likely, and we have budgeted a rate study for next year. And then again, the unknown of Santan Valley Incorporated, if and when that's going to happen, and the effect that'll happen on our state shared revenues. We believe this budget has town council priorities. It's a balanced general fund where revenues support expenditures. Current levels of services have been maintained, we've balanced ongoing revenues versus one-time revenues, maintained a conservative forecast. We've increased programming in Florence teen programs, Memorial Park improvements based on the committee recommendations. This budget has 15.9 million in transportation projects, 21.5 million in wastewater projects, 3.8 million in grant funding, and includes seven new full-time employees. So, the total budget next year is 97.8 million. This is an increase of 1.4 million. This excludes transfers. I want to point out the change, year-over-year change, 3.7 in street and public work projects, 2.4 million in public safety, it's mostly in police, communication center, 2.1 decrease in utilities, 1.7 decrease in community services, and 1 million decrease in general government. I also want to point out, if you see here, the revenues for FY25, item one, this includes 4.8 million in utility infrastructure, and those are WIFAL loans that we've taken this year. And next year, we have budgeted 18.6 million in utility capital infrastructure loans to balance the fund out. Capital improvements and equipment, this year, we have 53 million. The next six years, we have 11, excuse me, 111 million. Community services has 2.4 million this year, fire 1 million, general government 1.1, IT 735, police 4.9, streets 15.9, wastewater 21.5, and water 5.3. This slide shows the various funds by department, kind of a matrix here, and that's the 97...
You bet. Back on the sheet before this one, is there any way to put an FY25 in there before the 26 for comparison?
Yeah, we can add that and send that out. You'll see, general fund is 23.9 million, that represents 24% of the town budget. Street funds, that's your HERF and TET at 16.7, that's 17% of the budget. Our capital project funds, that's the construction fund from sales tax on construction, it's 13.3 million, 14% of our budget. Grants and donations, 3.9, 4.4% of the budget, 65,000, and these are in small courts and police funds. And our debt services, 2.3 million, that's 2%. Enterprise, 37.1 million, 38% of the budget. And our internal service fund, 316, and that's fleet services. Next, we're going to talk about property taxes. I included some educational slides in here, I won't spend a lot of time on there, but it shows people how property taxes are calculated. The important thing to know is the county determines the valuation, and the town council determines the levy. Those two factors will determine the rate. And here, just a chart representation, county value, council and the levy, and we'll back into the rate. Residential is calculated at 10%, vacant land is 15, and commercial is 18%. Here's a slide, the formulas on how to back into it. And this slide right here is the same slide. If people want to take their property tax statement, they can line it up and calculate how we came to that number. So, in FY25, assessed values in Florence was 150.3 million. FY26 is up to 163 million, 8.9% valuation, 5.9 came from existing properties, and 7.4 from new construction. So, this slide right here, you'll see that in FY25, this current year, we levied 1.5 million, and that had a levy rate of 1.0289. Next year, we've provided five options down here for council to discuss. Option one is currently in the budget. Option one, there is no increase to existing properties, but there's a 73,000 increase for new construction, and this is, the average residential increase is obviously zero for existing. Option two, if we levy, if we levy the same amount, the 1.5 million, because we're, property values went up, and we're levying the same amount, in this option, the rate drops, and existing property owners will see a $5 drop, and this again is just based on average residential townwide. Option three, if we use the same rate as last year, average is an $8 increase, and that'll deliver 137,000 to the general fund. A midpoint between last year and the max would be a $9 increase with a rate of 1.0339. And our maximum levy is 1.7 million, that would deliver 154,000 of additional revenue to the general fund, and be an average increase of $10. And as I said, option one is in the budget currently. Here, I showed an example based on the three different options, on the average, on the townwide, it has a 5% valuation increase. Option one, no increase, and here's your 5, 8, 9, and 10, and this is primary residential properties, legal class three, for this example. The second example is a property in Sunrise Estates, this is the same property we used last year in the example for consistency. This property had a levy of 140, keep it the same, it's zero. Fame levy would be a $5 drop, same tax rate would be a $7 increase, midpoint would be an $8 increase, and max would be a $9 increase. So, these are based on a true property. And then we did a property in Merrill Ranch CFD1, this again is the same property we used last year's example. It had a town levy of $174. This property, if we went to the max, would see a $11 increase year-over-year, midpoint would be 10, same tax rate would be 7. If we do the same levy, be a $6 drop, and no increase to existing, only where new construction pays its share, would be zero. So, again, those are the options we present. Obviously, we can't vote on it tonight, but we are looking for a consensus to put in the budget when we bring back the tentative budget. When we do bring that back, you're not voting on a levy, we will bring the final levy on June 17th for you to adopt.
Okay, with that then, I will open it up to council, Councilmember Bencina.
I spent a lot of time looking at this, and I spent a lot of time talking to Carl, trying to get a understanding, first off. After really looking at it, I have no problem staying at the levy rate of 10289, locking that in, and taking a $8 hit, you know, a year, versus dropping that back down under to 98.98, and letting it be zero. I think as long as we lock the levy rate and see what happens. I'm shocked, property values went up, because up in Anthem, they're taking big hits on selling their houses. So, it blows me away that I got a $20,000 increase on my assessed value. But, so, I personally have no problem keeping the levy rate at 10289, and then letting that hit, because I really don't want to fall below the buck, so, but that's my opinion.
Okay, thank you. Any other councilmembers' comments? Vice Mayor?
Well, as I understand it, the finance team was able to close what we needed to do with our budgets, and we have a balanced budget, and we know things are going to get tougher down the road. It's not like we're looking at a rosy picture in '27, '28. So, I would like to keep levy at zero for our taxpayers.
Thank you. Anyone else have any comments? Councilmember Maldonado.
I kind of concur with Councilmember Bencina. I think staying with number three, the same tax rate, keeping it right there. There's a lot of stuff coming down the pipeline, and it's nice to have a little nest egg right there, just in case something happens, and just kind of keeping it the same, so that way we don't fall behind. I would like, rather stay just a little bit ahead, and keeping the same tax rate as FY25, that way we don't, we don't fall behind on any, anything we need, we would need that money for.
Thank you. So, for me, so going through this, and, and so I guess, a little bit, for a little bit more clarification, I know the answer to this, but if you could, for our constituents, and if anybody else has any question. So, the number one's no increase to existing, but, but for new construction. Can you explain that a little bit more, and where that goes? Is that the increase is on their property tax, or is it done through their building process or permitting process?
It's on their property tax, so most likely, it might have been classified as vacant land, or farmland before, and when it converts to either commercial or residential, it then reverts to new construction.
Okay. All right, very good.
I just need to add something, it is based upon your new construction for the year. Yes, whatever additions you have in building permits, it's added into that in court and concert with any conversions from vacant or whatever.
Okay, so it's a number of things that feed, that feed into that for new construction. So, and I feel the same, actually, as the Vice Mayor and as the other two councilmembers with this. So, I think for me, I look at, I don't know that we're going behind if we go with number one, we're not falling, and I, and I always look at the difference of increase, and really what bang for the buck, that we are going to, and I get it, it's $8, right? And I certainly understand, and, and I think most people will not argue $8. However, I also believe that later on in our tenure here, that we're going to be speaking to the public of possibly, with some other bond measures, and some different things, not only in our wastewater, but like our transportation. We, we have some lofty requests coming through with our transportation and our priorities. And by the way, I did want to point this out, and I should have done this before, that you all have a memo, and we'll get this posted online, there's a memo that kind of clarifies a little bit more of our, the council priorities that we step forth to the budget committee and, and to our directors. So, we, we do have that in front of you too, so just kind of a, little bit of a clarification there on that. So, thank you, Bruce, for getting that, and, and then, so, for me, I could kind of go either way. I also believe that number one is the most attractive for me, to go where we actually lower the levy amount. I don't feel that we're going, we're getting behind by doing it, I don't think we're falling off. For one thing, because of the budget, and thank you, and I was going to say this at the end, but I'm telling you what, the Vice Mayor and Councilmember Bencina, as the budget committee, put in hours after hours after hours, and I personally know and seen the work they put in, and, and this should make this night and tomorrow night possibly, if we have to, just much easier on the rest of us, and it's just amazing. So, anyway, I, if I had the druthers, I think I would be more apt to go with option one, to actually lower the tax levy, and keep everybody at zero. It still gains a little bit, and the budget is based on that one currently. So, that's me personally, so, I don't know. Councilmembers, ladies?
Good question. I was sitting in the audience last year at this time, and 2023, I think, or 2022, you were at about 98.98, and you raised it to 102, because something happened that made you fall backwards and was going to cost the money. So, that's, that's another reason, the 10289, and I think if we went out and looked at other cities, towns close to us, that's a heck of a nice rate.
We just need to be careful about when we're doing our levy, because if you leave it very, very low, what we always try to do is to stair-step any increases we have. You don't want to go from a low to a maximum. That really does cause a ripple effect throughout the community. You try to stay in between and to level things out, so if you have to go upwards, which we may be looking at doing with the Santan Valley Incorporated, and this impacts general fund only, so you need to kind of weigh all these options out as you're deciding this. It looks very attractive to keep something at the lower end, but next year, you may have to go up to the maximum just to support the general fund.
Yeah, I understand.
So, just keep those, those thoughts in mind whenever you're deciding, making your decisions.
And that was in my thought. If we, if we go to 98, and then we have to go back, then I thought 10289, when I went and looked at some of the other towns and cities, I thought that was a very nice rate, so compared to others.
Okay. Turn your mic. Leaving the levy rate at 10289. So, I want to also note, Councilmember Neil is here, so Councilmember Neil, good evening. All right, was there any, Councilmember Busciello?
I also agree with number one at this time. I don't know if, can you hear me?
Yes. Councilmember Bedford, thought process?
I was just thinking, what she was just speaking about in reference to doing the zero, and then next year, we have to go up. We're going to have to go up, and it's not saying that if we do number three, you never know, next year, we might be able to come down, opposed to number one, and I, and I understand that, but we don't want to put ourselves in a bad predicament, and then spike it up. So, I like three.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I think the difference is, to me, a lot of this hinges on Santan, and very good assumptions that the finance department's giving us, and should that happen, we have an easy thing to point to, why we have to raise the tax, right? And so, I, and we don't know that that's going to happen. It's looking like iffy now, where it was, it's been a sure thing, it's been not going to happen, so I know it goes back and forth. Right now, it's looking more iffy. So, again, understand it's a relatively small step to any of these, but to the taxpayer, it's an increase, and I don't feel comfortable asking them so that we could have a buffer. That sounds to me like we could manage our money better.
Councilmember Busciello?
And that's where I'm at with it. This year, we've raised pretty much everything that we could raise, and we didn't want to do it, but we had to do it, and I think this is something that we don't have to do at this time. I, I hope we don't have to do it, but if we should, at least then, we would have some reasoning on why we had to do that, and not just for a buffer while we're out doing all kinds of, you know, other things that we could maybe pull back a little bit. So, that's kind of where I'm at.
Okay. Councilmember Neil, I know that you come in, do you want Carl to go back through this just a little bit?
Okay. One other thing since he's thinking, but if we go down to state shared income tax, you're going to see a $300,000 decrease this year over last year, so, coming from state,
Okay, so for the general consensus, have you been keeping track, kind of, the general consensus?
Now, we are at tie, 3-3.
So, so we are, general consensus about 3-3 right now, and this is not a vote, once again, to, for the public, this is not a vote, we'll vote later, so, it's, so, Councilmember Neil, you have a thought? Yeah.
I was about to speak next week, Chief text me. I thought it was next Tuesday.
Okay. Yeah, it's not, it's not a decision that we have to make tonight, you were looking for consensus. So, how do we normally move through this at this point, by the direction?
Well, we, you're tied right now, so we will just leave this in the budget, but when we come back, it's still open for debate.
Okay, very good, yeah, for the, for the actual vote. So, right now, we're just going to move forward, because the budget is based on option number one, we're just going to move forward with that, and then we'll have more conversations when we get a little closer.
Counsel, I just want to remind in everyone, so everyone's clear, if your property value increased, your taxes are going to increase.
Correct, yes, yeah, regardless of our levy rate, it's going to increase because of the valuation. All right, thank you.
Next item is personnel, new positions, medical and dental costs, and employee compensation. Currently, the town has 187 full-time employees, 187.13. We have some permanent part-time employees, and in this budget, we have seven additional personnel, one in police, three in public works, one in water, wastewater, one in community services, and one in courts. Of these seven, three were frozen over the past two years. We had a police sergeant that was frozen, we're recommending returning that to funded position. Court clerk, that's an additional. The librarian was frozen, we're unfreezing that one. Public works, we had a frozen mechanic position, returning that to funded, a lead custodian... that to funded, a lead custodian, a facility maintenance foreman, and a utilities safety officer. And this utility safety officer would be split between water, sewer, and These new positions with benefits were at a hundred and seventy-four thousand to the budget.
Just for your record, in your book, it shows the custodian as a custodian, not a lead. So, it is a lead.
Yeah, I apologize. Here are the unapproved positions deferred to bring back in the next year. Firefighters for Station Three, we had seven. The fire, Station Three, has been pushed out until the plant starts, so that trigger has been delayed. Community Services, Management Analyst requested one. Human Resources requested two reclassifications. They reclassified HR Generalist two. IT had an admin assistant. Utilities, Water Resource Compliance Inspector, one, and Utilities Apprentice Program had two. And so these three were not approved in this budget.
Hey, Carl, Councilmember Bucialata, you have a question?
My, my question was just, I know when we were talking strategically about possibly a position with Community Services to help get the cemetery to where it needs to be. Get that in here.
Currently, the prison workforce is being tasked with those duties.
Yeah, that's what we were discussing.
So Councilmember Bucialata, we looked at this one pretty indepthly, and we just thought that there wasn't a full-time need for a custodian out there. We thought that we can go and handle, handling the cemetery with Paul's current staff, and also with our inmate personnel. We are going to be looking at that, at that this year, to go and make sure that that is the need. And if we feel that we need to go and staff that full-time, we'll look at that in the next budget.
Thank you, Carl.
And here's a chart with the FTE by department. And it matches the table we were just looking at. Medical and dental benefits, we had a medical increase of four percent this year, dental, three percent. This was on the agenda last week. These increases will cost a hundred and twenty-nine thousand, based on current enrollment. I threw a slide in here to show the premiums. The average monthly increase on the PPO plan is eleven dollars and thirty-four cents. That should say HSA, and that increase is a seven dollars and seventy-nine cents monthly. Our dental, minor changes, we have, you'll see here, a twenty-seven cent average per paycheck increase in dental. And vision, we changed providers, and a small decrease to the employees. Employee compensation adjustment, here's another council concession, consensus item to be discussed. I've showed here the annual impact by one percent increases total, and the fund that they affect. And down below that, I showed an option with the delayed implementation of either December or January, based on our new employee review program. And so with that, I'll turn it over to the Town Manager, Mr. Walz.
Thank you, Carl. This is something that the Deputy Town Manager and I and took a pretty good look at. And our suggestion would be is that we, as we talked about last year, would be to go and implement the merit-based system. We've been working hard, trying to go and make sure all our employees have their current valuations in, which would move us to the December, January timeframe to go and look at a merit-based percentage. My recommendation to this group is that we go with a four percent, understanding that not everybody in a merit-based system is going to get a four. If we truly look at the merit-based system, I think we would probably average out to about a three percent, after we go and look at each and every employee. And that's open for council discussion.
Councilmembers, who wants to start the discussion? Councilmember Ben Sina?
I've, I've looked at this, and, and you look at Social Security, this year got two point five percent. Federal government got two percent. Last year, we went four. Council went four, when the deputy, the acting Town Manager and the Finance Director were trying to get three, because they could keep it within revenues, and not on the whole plan that some jobs wouldn't be filled, or there'd be some excess money to cover those costs, those revenues, without taking it out of general fund. We have an excellent insurance program. We are the only town, city, that I can find in Arizona that gives free medical insurance to our employees, and twenty-five percent cost to the, for the family. It's an excellent program. I call it a gold plan, when you look at it. That has to be taken into consideration, okay? There's only two places that give free, Pinell County and Florence. I will continue with that, but the town residents are paying property taxes and all these taxes to support that. So with SSA at two five and federal at two, I feel somewhere at two five, two eight five this year. Merit, because I ran merit in the federal government, you can have employees get five percent if they're your top earner. And somebody that's on the bottom could get one, could get zero. I had no problem getting it, doing it. It takes guts to do it, when you start giving zero or one percent pay increases, but if your people are on the bottom, and the performance review shows that, they just have to live with it. You just can't give everybody a three or a four. So my feelings are, is max three. I would prefer to probably see two eight five, because of the cost it's going to put on the taxpayers. And if we keep giving fours, we're going to add, in the case of five years, almost a million dollars to our payroll, just in pay increases. We're giving our, our people new furniture, new computers, better leaders. I truly believe that our Town Manager is hiring leaders, and that's a key for people to want to work for. You've got AJ and Mitch Chief, and, 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 and everybody that's coming along, they're leaders, and that's who people want to work for. We're giving them new office furniture. We're doing a lot of things. So we don't live in Gilbert, we don't live in Queen Creek, we don't live in Phoenix, we live in Florence. So, that's where I'm at, but it's, I'm one person, so.
Okay, anyone else?
Just real quick, and thank you, Councilmember Ben Sina. But you all remember a time where the Police Department went down to eleven officers. And I've been adamant with the Budget Committee that we cannot go back to a place like that. That was a very trying time for a community that is considered number one safest place in the state of Arizona. To go and get back to the place of experience and training we are at right now, to go and lose some money, and I, I want to go ahead and let council know that we have to go and compete with other towns, to go and keep the force that we have here now. Again, the commitment is to a merit-based system. Just as you said, I think we have good leaders that we are, have here, and that are going to be put in place. We have to go and make sure that merit system that we're currently under operates correctly. And just as you, as you have said, Councilmembers, and I have no problem. We're sitting directors around the table with me, going through each and every valuation. And if those personnel have not earned a four percent, then we'll sit down and figure out where they have to go and go. But I think that responsibility lies with our management, to go and make those kind of decisions. And Florence has got to stay competitive with other agencies, so we don't lose the personnel that we currently have in place.
So I did leave one thing out that you and I have discussed, and I brought up at our, at our previous meeting. I've seen where Queen Creek, in their budget direction, give the, they will do a survey in October, I think it is, of the three cities they look at for their sworn officers, fire and police. And if, after budget sessions are over and all approved, any of those towns have raised their wages for the sworn officers above where the town is, the Town Manager has the authority to raise those wages so they stay competitive. I have no problem putting that in the budget. So we're always protecting, because right now, we don't know what any of these towns are going to do, what Pinell County's going to do, but we will know come, come July. So if, if we look at it in October, and readjust for our sworn officers, I have no problem doing that.
Just one more thing. So I'm going to go ahead and put, that was my police hat. Now I have to go and put on the Town Manager's hat. And it's not just police, it's fire that we're losing. We're losing individuals in wastewater, which is very important to us right now. What we're talking about is retention across the board, across the town of Florence. When we talk about applicants that we're getting, are they the most qualified applicants? We want people coming to Florence because we're competitive in that environment. We want the best. We don't want to have to go and settle for someone that's secondary. So, as my Town Manager hat, boss, when I'm, I'm sitting back, I'm hoping that you all will go and consider, we need to be attracting quality people here in the town of Florence. This is a great place to live and work, but we have to be competitive across the board to make sure that that happens. And we can go ahead and see that in our application process. We're not getting the best of the best. You get four out of five applicants, one of those is probably going to be cream of the crop. So I'm asking council to go and sit back and consider that, and let your managers come back in and make sure that we don't pollute the system, as you're saying, by giving everybody a four. That's not going to go and happen.
One question on that, real quick. You have a mid, you have a entry-level price, and you have a maximum level wage, right? You can hire anybody within that wage. So it just depends on where you want to hire. If you want to hire low, then you create the problem. So if you've got a good person, you've got to get up the ladder into, towards the higher end, and make an offer, because we have that range. It's, it's just how management chooses to use it. So that's the other thought.
And I will go ahead and say, yes, you are correct. But then, when you go and hire in, let's say, an equal base, right? You hire in above, now you've got all these other employees that are lagging behind, and they just might be as good as the person that you brought in. So that's where that merit system comes into play. If we go and hire somebody in, we should be looking at all of our employees, and bringing somebody in at an equitable level. And then when that evaluation comes back around, here's where your, whatever it is, council's going to go and give, is in the place, we can go and make those individuals that are performing at their best, kind of moving towards the top.
Vice Mayor?
So, first of all, I want to say that I think we have the very best judge of character and professional competence in our Town Manager. And he has been out and about, and I dare say he knows ev- And if not for that, I would have my doubts, too. Merit pay is very difficult to implement. And I came from the days when nobody wants to be the bad guy, so everybody got a big salary increase. And so they had a ranking system, and someone had to be at the bottom, right? No matter what, because that's the only way merit pay works. And actually, it is very detrimental if you're on a merit pay system, and people killing themselves, and Joe Blow gets the same raise. But I absolutely trust your judgment. The other thing is, there's a reason why we're paying more in medical and dental, because we have to. We're Pinell County, and we are not at the top of the food chain to attract talent. We know that. So it's not an accident, I don't think it's a mistake, that we have such great medical. I'm proud that we do. And when you say people are the most important to you, you put your money where your mouth is. If we're going to grow this town to where we all want to be, we depend on each and every single one of our employees. And so I am a hundred percent behind this at, at four percent. I trust you that you will implement it properly. And I think that, in my opinion, of all the town staff I interact with, we've never had a better caliber of people across the board. And I think it's only going to get better, and I don't want to lose that momentum now.
Councilmember Bucialata?
I was going to say the same sentiment. I feel like I'm not a fan of merit. If somebody is not performing to their, their skills or their expectations, then do what you need to do, and then they shouldn't work here. That's how I feel. You know what I mean? Like, reprimand, write-up, verbally trained, do whatever you need to do, and they shouldn't be here at that point. But I feel like, when we compare ourselves, or when we look at Queen Creek, we are far from Queen, we're not bringing in our officers making a hundred thousand a year. We're not bringing in that kind of pay rate for our, our police and our fire, unfortunately, like they can. But if you talk to a lot of people that live in Queen Creek, they're not happy. A lot of staff, a lot of people, not saying anything bad about Queen Creek. I like what Queen Creek is doing, but then you talk to the farmers that have lived there, you talk to certain people that have been there the whole time, and they're opposed to it. So it's about a fifty-fifty split, depending on who you talk to. The one thing I will say here is, I'm pretty proud of the staff that we employ. I'm pretty proud of our directors. We shout them out at every council meeting, and I feel like if we're going to shout them out at every council meeting, then, then we should at least give them what their insurance rates are going up. Because one thing I will tell you, working for the companies that I've worked for, and the agencies that I've worked for, is nobody leaves faster than somebody that insurance goes up five percent, and their, their pay goes up two and a half. Because you have to be able to live nowadays, and as we know, everything is going up. There are so many places that you can pull from, so many places where we could cut back, and I just don't think this is one of them. I'm so happy with how full our department is, police and fire. I'm also happy with the staff that we have, and I feel like this is something that, you know, whatever we need to do, I, I would like everybody to start at four percent.
All right, Councilmember Maldonado?
Thank you, Mayor. So, I remember when I came on council three years ago, it was a different tune. There was a lot of things that should have been happening, as far as feedback and evaluations that weren't kind of happening at some of the departments, but we've come a long way since that. And one of the things that I know myself and some of the other council members from the previous administration, we, the, the reason why we wanted to go to the merit base was because we felt that it made people want to perform. And then now, with the, the new directors and, and different leadership in place, they have that tool at their arsenal. Because that's all, that's all it is. It's a tool for the managers and the directors to be able to say, look, you're the best of the best, you know, and I'm going to give you what I think you deserve. And I think that this is the best way to do it. In the military, you know, we had the system of one through five. Not everybody, the, the system was inflated. Everybody got a firewall five, we called it. Truly, not everybody was a firewall five. But the system got so, um, I just said, inflated, that they had to change the system. So I think this is a good start. And, like I said, we were trying to push for this, because we want the best of the best. You get what you pay for, okay? Yeah. So, you, that's, that's all I got to say, is like, when you go buy something, you get what you pay for. So, I'm leaving at that.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bedford?
I just wanted to really speak on public safety. We, we have to make sure that we keep our police officers and our firemen. I mean, to be able to walk around and not worry about anything, to look at each corner. I see police officers, and they, they engage. So, to only do, I say with, Tony said, the two point eight five- So, to only do, I say with, um, Tony said the two-point-eight-five. No. I think Bruce, you are an excellent town manager, and I have to give you your kudos. Do what you need to do. You know your employees. Just as, um, Councilwoman Bucelata said, you know your people. And that was never, never here in Florence, so do what you have to do.
Councilmember Neil?
Well, I've always said I don't like the merit system. I've never liked the merit system. I've worked my whole life, merit system introduces a good old boy system. It's, it's not, it's not a good system. I've never, ever liked the merit system. Um, there is a such thing, as an employee wants to do his job, do it right, do it good, and go home. You can't tell me, eh, you're hired, but you better do everything up to standards way above and beyond what you were hired for, to earn something. At the jail they call, do your eight and hit the gate. Um, it's, it's, it's wrong. It's wrong because you have so many people that are, have seen officers that ain't worth the salt that go in their bread. But yet, we go and drink beers with the serge on Friday, they get the good duties, the good days off. It's not a good system. It's not. Never liked it, have been in it, never liked it. Just because somebody wants to do their job and keep their head down does not mean they deserve less of a raise or less of pay. I've said that since this has gotten started. I will always say that. I've seen officers that won't say a word, but they're probably the best officer you ever wanna see in your life, and they get skipped over time and time again. Don't like it, it's not good. Stay competitive. If you have an officer not cutting the mustard, or, or employee not cutting the mustard, get rid of them. You don't pay somebody more because they wanna be a, excuse my language, I can't think of another word, kiss ass. That's, just shouldn't be how it goes. It shouldn't, and it's gonna lead to problems for us down the road, guaranteed.
Councilmember Bucelata?
I was just gonna say, I forgot, you know, just the price of how much it costs to onboard somebody, to get them in as an employee. You know, that's not something that we wanna lose either, cause it's not cheap to, to bring on a new employee to train, to get the medical and all that stuff. That, that was all I wanted to add in. Thank you.
Councilmember Bedford?
I went through the merit system as well, being a police officer. And there was a lot of officers that I looked at and said, they shouldn't even get it. They're doing things that they shouldn't do. So why give someone a three percent all the way across the board? So you're telling me I don't have to do what's expected of me? But, if the merit system works here, then we should utilize it. If it doesn't, then we can try something else. It's, it's, it's not hard, but I, I looked at it too, um, Snake, when I was going through the police department. And it's not fair. I think if, uh, we say four percent and, and, and Bruce says, okay, this is your, um, evaluation, you deserve one percent, then give that person one percent. And I know that you're gonna do the right thing by everyone. I only, I always say police because that's what I, I did. I was a law enforcement officer in public safety. And I wanna make sure that this town has the right employees here, so I can walk around and be safe at all times. Not, oh, we just lost five or six or seven officers because they're getting ready to go to Gilbert. I want some good quality officers, and we have them, and I thank you for that. So, whatever we have to do, I'm, I'm gonna do it.
Okay, Vice Mayor?
So, I wanna also reinforce and not leave out our directorship, right? Because they're the front lines, and they're the ones feeding you and helping you in the total evaluation. And that's one of the things I think about. I'm with you, Councilmember Neil. Anything can be implemented badly, right? And I don't love across-the-board pay raises. I just don't love that. And we've all seen merit pay implemented poorly. I trust our town manager, and I look out at our directors, and I really like what I see, and I think they're getting the message for, we want to reward our good employees, and we want our dead wood gone. Not one percent gone.
Okay, Councilmember Neil?
Um, totally understand that. What I'm saying is, is all of, we trust Bruce, we trust Bruce, we trust Bruce. We also got directors, we also got supervisors under directors, we've got people under them. It ain't all, he can't sit and watch everybody, every second of the day, to say who's a good employee, who's not a good employee. We're gonna have to depend on everybody that's up under him, above the final, the lowest total, to tell him to report to him. That's where you run into good old boy system. That's where you run into, ah, my buddy, I'm gonna just get you skated by this time. And we've recently had directors leave, ask to leave, whatever the circumstances was. So that shows you right there, it's probably not gonna be a fair system. We had directors not doing what they supposed to do, so. We can't just depend on directors to give this man the right information. I totally have trust in our town, but I also grew up in this town, and grew up in the sheriff's department, and I've seen it firsthand. It doesn't work well. We will lose some really good employees instead of getting rid of employees that don't need to be here. I believe before we implement any kind of merit system, we weed out who doesn't need to be here, before you make promises of money.
All right. I mean, I'll agree with Nicole, and I agree with, with Snake, because it happened to me. I mean, I had best operating state of the twelve people that my installations, that my boss had that were running them. I could give him my operating statements, I could give him my customer surveys, I could give him the annual customer survey for the employees, and all my numbers were better, but I wasn't his buddy. So therefore, my performance review got hit, and I didn't get the big pay raise. I didn't care, but I ran mine. When I got in Europe as a division chief, I had twelve senior rate people, equivalent to me in level. And the worst employee I had out of that was the highest paid one. And when I got his file, and I brought it in, and I started looking at his performance reviews, okay? He had the worst performance reviews of everybody, but he had thirty years of experience. We couldn't get rid of him if we tried, cause he was doing just the basic, okay? But he, prior to merit, he was getting the same pay raises as everybody. Uh, and he was probably somebody's buddy that got him promoted years, years ago. But, uh, merit does work, and we have to trust that performance reviews, and there's gonna be this tier, and you have to trust that there's gonna be some employees, if they see that something ain't going right, they're gonna come squealing. They're gonna go see HR, uh, and say, hey, this ain't right. But, uh, I agree with you, but I, you know, council did vote in merit pay, if I remember, if I remember right. I don't, you two have obviously voted against it, but there was still a vote. But I think merit pay, if it works, and if everybody does it right, it does work. Uh, to, to see the, the best start to move up. Councilmember Maldonado?
So, one of the things that we did in the service was, we had climate assessments. So every year, guess what? I'm an employee, right? I get the anonymously, for a lot of survey, nobody knows who I am. Sometimes I figure it out, right? Because the questions are very specific. But, I get the rate, my raters, on their, on their performance. And guess what? My buddy gets to do the same thing. Where there's smoke, there's fire. That's the way I look at it. If everybody's saying the same thing about their, their supervisor or whoever in their chain of command, that's where we need to be looking at. So, maybe that's an option, that maybe, once a year, just do a climate assessment amongst the employees, just to make sure that we are being firm, fair, and consistent. If that's what it takes, that's what it takes.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bucelata?
I truly believe in our directors that we have right now, as well as our town manager, as well as our incoming police chief. I've known him for years as well, and I know he's by the book, fair, firm, and consistent, and that's what a lot of us go off of in our lives. I just, I would rather, you know, give them that four percent leeway and let them make that decision. That's all I'm saying, cause if two and a half percent, that's a drop in the bucket nowadays. It's, it's really not gonna show anything when your insurance is going up, you know, four. So, that's it.
Okay, so, in, to keep this thing moving a little bit, so I'm gonna go. I agree with every one of you. I, I don't disagree. Two things that always come to my mind, because I spent my career in municipality. I spent my career, um, going through anywhere from no raises to, for anybody for seven years, during some of the bad years, to, uh, giving across-the-board raises, to going through a merit system. Merit systems can work, uh, it's accountability. So it's accountability that we hold as a council to our town manager, that he holds to his supervisors and, and his directors, to make sure that's right. What doesn't work is a step system that gets off so much. When I used to step down, excuse me, with a, with a five-year firefighter and try to explain to them why my, the new hire firefighter was hired at mid-range that now makes more than a five-year firefighter. That's what doesn't work. And, and trying to do so, the merit base can, I've seen it work, uh, it, but it, it requires accountability all the way across, and it is, and I get it. It is, you know, it, it has the potency of, of, and of looking bad as, well, you know, this guy goes golf with him all the time. I, I get it, Snake, and I absolutely agree that there are instances that that has happened. So, the, the thing of it is also that we have to think about is that revolving door that we have had in this town of all levels of staff, not just directors, not just, you know, assistants, not, you know, it's with all level. Um, we are down away a little bit from municipalities, so we, we do get possibly less. I think I'm, I've got a lot of confidence right now that we're getting a lot of very good applicants. We've got a lot of interest going on in this town, and I like to think that it's because of what is going on in this town right now, whether it's political, it's our merchants, it's everything else. So we're starting to see that, we're starting to, to see the commercial. So, the thing of it is, our constituents expect the services that we promised them. So whether it's our water, whatever, and, and we can talk, we can talk sworn, we can talk police, we can talk fire, but we're also talking about every one of our employees and making sure that, that, that they are taken care of. I, I understand that we're, you know, we are also held accountable by, by our constituents and, and what we do. I believe at this point, with a lot of discussions I've had with Bruce, a lot of discussions, and, and a lot of also, and I, I also appreciate what council members have said, I also do have confidence in our staff. I do have confidence in our senior staff. Um, moreover, I have confidence in this guy that will hold those folks accountable. That's the only way that it works, the step, or the, the merit base works. Uh, for me, I'm ready to give that a try, and, and it's been in the works for a while. Past councils have discussed it over and over, it's unimplemented, um, and I've been assured that we are ready to do it. And so, I, my thought is the four percent as the town manager has, uh, has asked for, and let's get this merit base going, and let's, let's see this thing work. It can work, and right now, this is, I guess, um, we're holding it accountable that it's gonna work. So, for me, it is exactly what, uh, the manager's asking for, is the four percent, uh, with this, the, the impact with the December, January, whatever the, um, for, to get the merit base going. Is there any other discussions? Yes, okay, one last word, sir.
Uh, just real quick, and I appreciate, um, the conversation around the table, I really appreciate it. I have been involved in a merit-based system, just like, um, Councilmember Ben Sina and Councilmember Maldonado, forty-some odd years. So I understand exactly what you're talking about. And it's called the halo effect, is basically what it's called. Um, I believe, look, I mean, the, the system is subject to some human subjectivity. Think you're gonna run into that in any system. Um, but you all can hold me accountable to go ahead and make sure that this system is what it's supposed to go ahead be. And I guarantee you, if it's not, I'll be the first to come back and go ahead and tell you that it's not working. But I'm gonna ensure that it does.
All right, so if I'm not wrong, hearing, going around, listening to everyone, that we have mostly a consist, uh, consensus uh, for what the manager is asking, the four percent. Is that correct? Head shakes? Head no? Okay, very good. Thank you.
Just to clarify, with the delayed implementation of the new evaluation program?
Correct.
Okay, perfect. All right, next item is our general fund budget. Um, our general fund budget ending FY twenty-four had twenty-four-point-seven million dollars in it. Um, this year, we're gonna drop one-point-six million to the bottom line. And, uh, FY twenty-six, we're projected four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand dollars in revenue over expenditures. Um, as you see, we have a healthy fund balance. However, we remain cautiously optimistic, um, based on state shared revenues. Here, I've got a shy, slide to show our, uh, fund balance for FY twenty-six is positive four-hundred-and-twenty-six thousand. You guys selected option one, or we're gonna leave that in there? Um, a merit at four percent's gonna cost three-hundred-and-forty-six thousand. I have a hundred thousand in there for economic development, town manager project. Um, those positions that we discussed, we have a six-month delay in hiring them, other than the police sergeant, that's day one. And, uh, we received a increase in our court contract the other day with Eloy twenty-five thousand dollar increase. And so we're gonna be in the black still, two-hundred-and-fifty-one thousand revenue over expenditures in general fund. Our general fund revenues by source, get this out of the way. You bet. I apologize, the item five was added after I printed, yep, yep.
Thank you.
All right, general fund revenues, um, you'll see over here are total. FY twenty-four, we had a twenty-five-point-four. FY twenty-five, we're, are gonna end it at twenty-five, drop to three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. FY twenty-six, we're projecting to drop to twenty-four-point-five. When you benchmark FY twenty-four as the high point, our cumulative revenue loss for twenty-five and twenty-six in the general fund is one-point-two million. Three-point-one million of that you can see here is from state shared revenue. We've, we've lost three-point-one million in cumulative revenue. Auto license, which is another state shared revenue, seven-hundred- Auto license, which is another state shared revenue, seven hundred thousand. And miscellaneous, a hundred and twenty-three thousand. So we're highly reliant on state shared revenue. We just got to keep an eye on that. Now here's just an example. This is the three point one million dollar reduction in, or three hundred, three point one million in state shared income tax reduction.
So can you go back to the last slide? So one of the things I've been keeping up with legislative is that there are a lot of, um, stuff in legislation right now where, um, if you're a hundred percent disabled vet and stuff, they're trying to pack some stuff on, uh, getting their income tax back and, and not having to pay taxes. So that's, there's a lot of things in the works right now where it's going to affect our, you know. It's going to help veterans that are a hundred percent disabled, but it's going to not help us as a town when, when it comes to those state share revenues. So these are things that I'm looking at, at the, on the legislative side. And I, and I'm pretty sure that Jeff's keeping up with it too. But I just read about it, about all these different initiatives, um, for a hundred percent disabled veterans and, and believing them with that, that, uh, that burden. But then someone's going to have to eat that. And, and that's where it's going to come down to.
Um, food taxes and a general fund revenue, but it was under attack. And so, uh, other state shared revenues, um, predict they'll be under attack. Uh, this is the three point one million in income, state shared income tax loss. And F, in calendar year twenty-three, state shared income tax, they put a flat tax of two point five percent to, uh, account to help cities adjust for this. They raised the allocation from fifteen to eighteen percent to hold harmless. Um, that did not home, hold harmless to town of Florence. Three hundred and thirty-six thousand reduction in income tax. And again, uh, the three point one million from the high of FY twenty-four.
You know, Carl, if I could add on that. So this is something, and this for rest of the council, as we're all speaking to our legislators, uh, independently about some of the things that are going on right now. And I've found more times than not that they are touting this, that this was the great save all for the towns and cities. Now that only works when you increase your, your census by a lot of the, our towns and cities are doing that. And so we've been in meetings together that here with, as a group, that, that there are some showing some cities that this really was a big difference. For us, our census went down since this. And so this has created a negative impact, which are, some of our legislators don't understand. So I urge, uh, the council and citizens to not only understand this, but when they do tout that in front of you, make sure that you're clearing that up, that it's not a save all for the town of Florence.
Uh, state shared sales tax, uh, from the high of FY twenty-four, we're eight, down eighteen thousand, so it's relatively flat. This chart makes it look like it's not, but, uh, we're flat there. Uh, general fund, um, historical budgets by year. I apologize, these Zoom things are distracting. This just shows the trend from the past four years. And, uh, in this next slide, I show by department the change from FY twenty-five budget to FY twenty-six and the comment. So town council, uh, their budget's down five thousand, and that was for some non-recurring training, I believe for the new council seating. Uh, town managers' budgets down one hundred and forty-one thousand. We moved the project manager position that we had budgeted into the capital plan. And that'd be in the capital fund eleven. Town clerk has a fifty-one thousand increase, fifty-one thousand dollar increase for, uh, recording scanning project. Legal, five thousand, uh, increase due to subscriptions and memberships. Courts, ninety-six thousand up year over year. That's for the new, um, headcount. Finance, forty thousand year over year. Credit card fees continue. Um, our audit expense this year, we have a full audit and, uh, utility pills, um, printing and distribution. Human resources has a drop of thirty-three thousand. Last year, we had the sign-on bonuses in the HR department. Um, this coming year, they'll be in the department, the hiring department will pay for the bonus.
And Carl, I got a question. So if you go paperless right now, do you get like a discount or something?
No.
Is that something we've ever tried to, tried to do that? You know, trying to, trying to go green and trying to go paperless?
Yeah. Yeah. We, we.
Going paperless? Have you ever thought about going paperless?
On our billings?
Correct. I don't, I don't know, because I don't pay, my wife pays mine.
Maybe I misunderstood. Was the question, do we give a discount?
Yeah. Or, or even just trying to go paperless just to save the environment?
We definitely push paperless online, uh, but we don't give a discount. I know some places give a dollar discount if you sign up for. We don't offer that.
All right. And you think that would, that would help? Like trying to help people go paperless and, and?
No. I think the people. The increase in is our debit and credit card usage because so many people are converting from writing checks and coming in and paying cash, they're doing it online. And with that becomes fees associated with that. And we're, we're only a large, allowed to charge back on, on non-utility. So we collect a fee for some of that credit and debit card usage, but for utility counts, which are a major source of incoming money, we are not allowed to charge for those fees.
Okay. Thank you.
But that's because of an increase in doing all electronic, um, payments.
Where did I live off? Okay. Uh, information technologies is up fifty thousand. Software and contractual services. Community development is down two hundred and fifty-one thousand. Code enforcement and the clean and lean has been moved into the police support budget. Uh, general services is up three hundred and fifty-six thousand. And that is from, uh, a change in the way we allocate the fleet expenses to the various funds. Uh, police is up six hundred and thirty-six thousand. We have three, um, SRO officers in the budget and the sergeant position. Um, fire is up, is flat. It's up thirty-eight thousand. That's flat. OT is down a hundred and equipment is up forty-five thousand. And there's other various expenses, totally ninety thousand. Uh, community services is up six thousand. That's flat. Engineering is up sixty-seven thousand, and that's based on an allocation change where we charge the enterprise funds and the transportation funds. And facilities is up two hundred and seven thousand, and there's two positions in the budget. Right. Cause of, uh, allocation changes. What, what did I say? Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. It's down. Okay. Um, here's just a representation of general fund. Forty-six, forty-seven percent is going to police and fire. That's consistent. Um, sixteen percent into community services. And the rest, single digits are based on the, uh, mostly the support departments for the town. Um, here's another, uh, chart to show three years, how we allocate the general fund expenditures. And you'll see here the police and fires at twenty-eight. And here it went to fifty. Um, the, the reason for the jump in police and fire? We have a two million dollar PSPRS planned payment we're going to bring back to council before the end of the year for our unfunded liability. And, um, you'll see that it drops down to forty-seven percent for police and fire. Community services remains in trend. Same with, uh, administration, public works and our non-departments. Uh, this is just another graph of showing, um, what division eats up, takes general fund dollars. And the drop in police and fire, again, that's because we had a two million dollar PSPRS Uh, expenditures by category, um, personnel in general fund is your number one. Um, we don't spend any capital in that, and that runs, uh, around seventy-four to seventy-eight percent year. Contractuals, twelve, that's shot up to, it's going up incrementally to fourteen point six. Commodities is hovering around six and a half. Other charges is up to three point nine. And transfers out, uh, jumped in as part of the fleet, um, change that we made in the way we allocate. Uh, next, talk about the streets funds, the HERF and TET. Using a FY twenty-four high of two point six million, um, we've lost seven hundred thousand in FY twenty-five and twenty-six together. This is offset by, uh, a pickup in TET of seven hundred and forty-three. So a little pickup. Problem is we have a lot of capital projects in transportation to fund. So here I want to show you, we are going to end FY twenty-six. Um, the HERF fund balance will have two million dollars and the TE fund, TET fund will have two point eight million. Uh, the HERF fund will, um, only support operational expenses. And, uh, in FY twenty-eight, it's going to be dependent on some money from the TET fund to balance out the operations. Again, we talked about Santan and the impact that that will have on HERF. Um, because they're in Pinell County, part of the HERF formula is part of it goes to the county and then it goes to the city. And so that, um, will definitely hurt us. And, uh, we need to identify new funding sources for the capital projects that we have over the next, uh, seven, eight years. Here I did a eight-year forecast of the HERF fund. This is with a two and a half percent growth. You'll see in FY twenty-eight, um, the HERF fund will need a transfer in from TET of a million dollars a year just to cover the operational expenses of personnel and, uh, the department. And in FY twenty-seven, the HERF fund will not be able to contribute any dollars to capital Uh, TET, the eight-year projection. Uh, to balance out our, uh, eight-year projection, um, I have in here an eight million dollar bond to balance, to keep the fund balance positive. And you'll see down here, I have the debt service. These are rough estimates. And we also have a plug-in here of two million dollars in new funding source revenues based on the current capital projects that we have in the plan today. Uh, and here these added together, this eight-year projection includes twelve million in new funding and eight million in financing. And again, that financing is to keep the fund in balance based on, um, how the capital projects fall out in which year.
And just a, a note, we have to be careful on the HERF fund because, uh, legislatively, they're always making runs to reduce down our highway user allocation. So this is critical to the town of Florence. It's, it's going to only be able to support operations up to a certain point. And then we'll be in trouble if they come in and decide to cut that. It'll speed up things to where we're going to have to make, um, some additional, um, decisions about the HERF fund.
Mr. Mayor?
Vice Mayor.
Are we the only ones in this position where we get to twenty-seven, twenty-eight? I mean, this has got to be a statewide, all the cities and towns. I, I.
Well, because of our, um, transportation excise tax fund, we are in a more precarious position because they're funding quite a bit of capital right now. If any other city decides to come into the Pinell County allocation, as you can see, uh, Carl is running HERF and TET together. But if any other city or town comes into the Pinell County, that allocation goes back and do a hopper and then reallocates based on population. So you may have a lot of money out there, but if somebody comes in with an eighty thousand, which happened in Maricopa, uh, came in with a large population, it got reallocated and of course our HERF went down. But everyone else is also having issues with highway user funds unless they're a big revenue producer.
But as we continue to grow and the houses start to sell and get developed, our population base is going to grow and the other towns, you know, are going to, going to see it because eventually we could be larger than Quin Creek.
Yes.
But I am seeing, I think it was Gilbert or Mesa, is looking at a one percent sales tax for infrastructure?
You haven't seen that exactly.
I didn't read, they're pre-budgets. They're, they're worried too with their, with their infrastructure, uh, HERF dollars and, uh, road funds.
It's just that our transportation projects are so costly. I think it's, um, what is it? A million dollars per?
Half lane mile.
Yeah. That's a lot of money and we have a lot of area to cover.
Well, and I think that's kind of when we were going, we were talking about our levies and, and that was kind of one of the points that I was making that, because I truly do believe that we're going to be coming back and, and asking our constituents that, that we're going to need some other funding for those, for those projects, specifically transportation, that have been just lingering out there for years and us trying to play catch-up. And we're, and we're going to do that. And that was kind of my, my topic or my thought process when I was, when I was discussing leaving it like it was. And so, uh, but it's, that's very real. And I know that you guys have been preparing for all kinds of different possibilities with loss of revenues, reallocation of HERF, reallocation of state shared revenues as a whole. Uh, and I, and I know that there's some, some confidence that we're kind of getting an idea. And I know specifically if we're talking Santan and Corporation, those numbers I believe are around one point seven million or so on that last thing I, I had seen. And I know that you guys have been, been thinking about that. That's one thing that this staff has been doing is trying to read those leaves, you know, as good as it is, right? How long is a piece of string? So it's kind of like trying to figure that out, so.
We've been trying to come up with some options to present, but, uh, Florence is at a little bit of a disadvantage because we don't have a lot of commercial around here. You have very minimal commercial. And until that commercial product starts coming in and generating sales tax revenue, you're going to see this continuing on. So we need to be, you know, aggressive in our, our, uh, recruiting new businesses into the town.
Well, and we feel very, very, very confident that, uh, and discussions that I think we were all having, and I know the town manager's been having with some commercial development. And, and it is, and, and I say this all the time, this is kind of a vicious circle that, that commercial needs houses, houses need, or a commercial also needs those employees. But it's kind of until we can take a full circle and, and get there, and it just all happens at the same time. So I have a lot of confidence in the next few years. I don't have confidence in the next six months that commercial's going to be busting down the door, but I think we've got some movement happening right now, so. Thank you, Carl.
You bet. Um, next we will review our major funds and the change in fund balances year over year. With, first is with the general fund. We discussed that, but, uh, we're going to pick up one point six million this year. and next year, we are picking up 426,000. Our HERF fund, it will be uh expenses over revenue, these are capital projects driving this in FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six. Uh, TET, um, 2.2 million this year, and uh upside down, 3.5, but again, that's just capital projects. So, that's um spending our reserves. Uh, general capital fund, this is the construction sales tax. 381,000, revenue less than expense, these are capital projects. And the same with FY twenty-six, 5.1 million, so we're spending fund balance on projects. Uh, the governmental capital, I, I should've said construction tax fund, um, number thirteen. Uh, 1.2 million pickup this year, and 1.4 million next year. A food tax, pick up 213,000 this year, and next year, uh expenses over revenue, 224,000. Again, capital projects, not, not any operational spending there. Um, enterprise funds. Our water fund um will be uh 2.5 million, revenue less expenses, this is capital projects. And uh same for next year, 1.3 million. This year, we have uh this, this WIFA loan, let me see here. I've got 4.8 million in WIFA money we're spending, that's the increased revenue. And um item two is 18.6 million in FY twenty-six. This, we have to do some financing in WIFA loans to balance our sewer fund. So, if you see our sewer fund ending balance in FY twenty-four was 11.6 million. Um, we have it coming down to 7.3 million at the end of FY twenty-five. And based on the capital projects, 1.6 million at FY, end of FY twenty-six. Uh, sanitation fund is healthy, 1.1 million FY twenty-four ending balance, 1.3 million FY twenty-five, and 1.367 ending balance in um FY twenty-six. Uh, sewer fund, um, we need to, um, as I said, we've had to put in uh for FY twenty-five, 2.2 million in WIFA loans. And for FY twenty-six, based on the capital project plan that we have outlined, we will need 14.1 million dollars in financing to balance that fund out.
Now, Carl, some of the wastewater fund CIP project is still waiting on a utility director to tell us if we're gonna have to do what's in the, what's projected, right?
Yes, sir, that's correct. Um, and we will also need to do a rate study in FY twenty-six. Our current rate structure um is insufficient to support the capital projects that we have in there now. Uh, fund balances are impact fee funds. Um, I'll come down here to the twenty-six, you'll see we're spending uh 1.7 more in expenses over revenue, capital projects, police, 1 million, capital projects, and down in the sewer fund. Oh, I'm sorry, I was thinking sanitation, that does say sewer, uh, 906,000. Okay, home stretch here.
Can you, can you go back?
You bet.
This last, I just, I, well, I guess I can come in and talk to you guys and get more explanation. But I was just wondering, like, park funds of 4 million, what can we use that money for? The park fund, any of them, actually, the fire fund, the park fund, the park fund especially at 4 million, plus we have 2.6 million in food tax for recreation.
Um, capital projects only due to new growth, yeah.
If you would like more detail on that, the uh Development Impact Fee Study is posted on our website under Finance. You can go there and go through the whole study, it shows you exactly which projects are identified for new growth.
Yeah, the most important thing is that it's only new growth only, though, not, no replacement. Yep.
All right, so at this time, Carl, so I'm just gonna ask uh if we need a five-minute break, or we just continue on, and people need to get up and whatever can do that, general consensus? Keep going, all right? Carl, do you need a break?
I'm good. My feet hurt, but I'm good.
Better quit drinking water.
Last session.
Need some Dr. Scholz.
Um, so uh we've got the CIP items listed by department, and uh we'll have the directors come up here and review their CIP items, if you have any questions. And if you have any operational questions um about their budget, this would be a time to ask that now. Um, so uh first department is Community Services, Mr. Paul King. Uh, Mayor, would you like us to go item by item um on the CIP list? Or do you want to just open it up for questions to the director?
Yeah, I, I think if it's general consensus, I'd, I'd hate to go item to item if we just have some general consensus. And, and this is where I have a lot of confidence in our, our committee, uh, and our town manager and our finance. So, I think if there's general, as we go down through there, if there's any general questions on it, if that's okay? Does that seem right, right to the council heads? Okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, may I just make the comment for uh Councilmember Bushelato in particular? When we went through this, I was trying to pay attention to especially the cemetery, and it looked to me like they covered everything, but you should take a look.
Yeah, I was just about to say the same thing when I, when I saw that, because I know I said on the ad hoc committee also.
I've got a couple of questions, Paul, and probably for Bruce and, and Carl.
I went through and I'm reading some of the justifications. And I'm looking at the Aquatic Center Vacuum Manual Unit Aquatics Complex for eighty-two hundred. The justification says this will speed up the time to clean our lap pool. Am I right, Paul?
I'm sorry, which project was this?
The manual vacuum unit for eighty-two hundred. And, and my question was, if it would speed it up, and if it's readily available to purchase, why don't we purchase it for the season? It's eighty-two hundred dollars, it's coming out of food tax where we have plenty of money. So, number six, Aquatic Center Vacuum Manual Unit. Just because you wrote it up as it will speed up the cleaning of this, the uh, the lane pool.
I agree with you, because if anybody's ever seen that pool get hit when these monsoons hit, it takes the one gentleman cleaning it days to, to rectify it, so I agree with you on that.
And it would be if it's readily available to be able to purchase.
It's, so to answer your question, the, the reason we would like this unit, in addition to the equipment we have, is to speed it up with extra vacuuming time. Um, when those summer monsoons do hit, they put all kinds of uh dirt in the pool. And um if it stays long enough, we get black algae, which is the worst kind.
So, my, my question is, do you know if the unit is readily available to purchase, like it's in inventory?
I don't know at this moment, for sure, but our intent would be to purchase it as quickly as possible.
Councilmember, what we can go ahead and do, let's research that, and if that's something that we can go ahead and get, and get before the end of the year, we'll go ahead and do that.
The other one is eleven, Parks Heritage Park Fitness Obstacle Course, you pushed it out to twenty-eight. Could've swore, I thought I heard some discussion on this last year. But it's coming out of food tax money where we do have money, so is it something we couldn't move forward? Into twenty-five, twenty-six? That would be up to you.
Councilmember, Bissina and council, we looked at uh going after a grant for this obstacle equipment, a- and we did get a grant, um, however, um, it, it's kinda moved into the cost, more or less, so it's really like we didn't get a grant. So, we wanted to go back to the table and kinda look at that a little bit, um, assess what we really needed to go around Heritage Park. And uh, we figured with everything else that Paul has on the table right now, it'd be more beneficial for us to look at that uh, uh, in the upcoming year, in twenty-eight. Paul has some ideas, though. Paul does have some ideas of what he wants to incorporate.
So, when is it gonna start? I'm sorry.
This item is scheduled for uh next year, the, sorry, the twenty-seven.
Yeah. So, so I had a question on that also, on the obstacle course, is that kinda like the one that we have down at Tyndale? Something like that, have you been to that one?
Um, I'll let Paul go and discuss that, because his version of the obstacle course was a little different than mine, but my physicality is a little different than his as well. I'll let him tell you kinda what he was looking at.
Uh, councilmember, the, the obstacle course that I researched was a competitive course, uh, kind of looking straight at teens and adults uh for fitness specifics. And my thought was to make the Heritage Park Playground a play complex for any age, uh, so we could capture not only the zero to five, but the five to ten, twelve, and then also the uh twelve and up. So, we would capture fitness and play for all, um, so it, it accomplishes that.
Thanks.
I'm glad you're getting ready to do that, Paul, because I was on it today.
So, Paul, I had a question um on item, so when we get into item number seventeen, uh, your Parks, your Main Street Park redesign, of course, we've, you know, this is something we've talked about sometime, and, and I know that this council is supportive of that, that park. So, I, that's the only thing that I see on that is just design. Was there anything else that you guys were looking at, trying to put in this year for that?
I think Kathy and I thought bathrooms was the big key, as the first thing that had to go in. Uh, so, when we met with them back in March.
I, and, and my, my thought process was, as we were walking up there, doing different tours and looking at that, that maybe that the, the bathrooms were gonna be part of this budget. Was the only, that's really the question I had with that, and I know you're, you're doing a design and, and everything with that. So, did you, is that anywhere in here, or was that a thought process either this year or next year?
The uh, the discussion I recently had with Town Manager Walls is, um, yes, we wanna prioritize bathrooms for next year. We will look at funding once we get rolling in our capital plan, uh, to see if we can find funding for that. I, I sent some design plans over to uh Town Manager, and he seemed o- open to those. So, um, it's something that we can accomplish in the same fiscal year as the design.
Right, I think the conversation was to use the monies that's in there for design overall for the park for the bathrooms. So, I think the funding is there.
Councilmember Adam, you are exactly right, um, that initially sixty K was for the design, and also our new facilities that are back behind uh Main Street Park. But uh, Director King came to me, and we understand that that is a priority, go ahead and put a bathroom on there. He's already presented me some models of what that bathroom possibly could even be, and the cost setting behind that. We are definitely gearing up, that is one of council's priorities, um, to gear towards getting a bathroom set up in there, hopefully, uh, in the next fiscal year.
We need to move the J-John off Main Street.
Yes, uh, Paul and I also talked about that as well. Um, that's not a very good look for the town of Florence to be seeing an outhouse, basically, in front of the park. So, this will be a priority for us.
Can, can I ask something? It's just the bathrooms, you all said, correct. Concession stand.
So, Councilmember Bedford, and, and we thought about you uh, when we, when we talked about this, but we wanted to go ahead and make sure um that we hit this from a phased approach. Um, and the priority being that we wanted to ensure that we got a bathroom out there first. Remember, there's still a design in process, so the design includes, I don't, I don't know if we necessarily talked about a concession stand, but some type of um facility out there for the kids to go ahead and play. And I think you kinda mentioned a basketball court, so we're looking at all that, but that will be in the design. We know that we can go ahead and get a bathroom done right now, which we think would be beneficial to the town.
I, I just don't wanna be lost.
I don't think we can lose you, no, ma'am.
I think when we were talking about it too, is we, we really didn't have a, a general area on what we wanted to do with that park. It's kind of an awkward shape, you have the park on the right side by the road, you have the oleanders, and then you have the new purchase building right behind it. So, I think it was just trying to figure out, is there gonna be an amphitheater there? Is that where maybe the, the um, oh my gosh, we were just talking about Heritage Park? What'd you call it, the uh? What was it? Yeah, obstacle course, thank you, I went blank. It's late, I've been up since five. Uh, the obstacle course, maybe something like that could go there for the kid, you know, it's just, it's early stages, but I, I do agree, something needs to go there, but for now, bathrooms would be great rather than outhouses.
Yeah, I think um the, the critical part of the design phase will be the feedback from our stakeholders. And so, uh, we'll come in and do that with a landscape architect, and make sure that all bases are covered with uh getting ideas and, and understanding of what's possible for that park, making sure that we can keep the mature trees that are there, and uh leave the mystique of the, the park itself.
Okay, Paul, so, uh, one other question that I have right now is item eighteen, uh, the Parks Maintenance Shop Building, that's the said building at Main Street Park?
Yes, correct.
Right, so then, so eighteen and nineteen are both for the Main Street Maintenance Facility?
Well, like you say, I, I personally don't wanna wait a year and a half to put bathrooms in that park. So, I don't know if we just wanna put a budget in there, we have the money out of park fund, uh, and then work to try to get it built uh as a priority. Because I think it's gonna go in the area that it used to have some bathrooms, or there's some water over that way. But I would hope we could move faster on putting that in there, but, and not wait till the twenty-six, twenty-seven budget cycle.
Well, I think if we use, I'm sorry, Bruce, uh, if we use the money that's already in there, the money that you've been speaking about, Councilmember Bissina, that, that the money's there. So, it just now turns to a priority for council and priority for, for uh the town manager here on that, so... Well, I think you're, I think we're already looking at monies that were gonna, already been collected, uh, correct. And the food tax, those are that, that monies that you were talking about, being able to use that. So, I think, I think we've got money allocated in different areas that we can pull out of to do that, without, without having a line item, but I think we, we do exactly what you're saying. We don't leave here without a priority that, that we know now that the bathrooms are a priority, wherever we're able to grab that.
And council, we, we prefer to do the design work first to make sure that we know exactly where we want those bathrooms, uh, and, and then uh move forward with uh that uh directly after the design. The intent is to, to do the design uh July one, start, start that process as quickly as we can, so we can get both projects in.
Can't imagine it's gonna take very long to do the design on that part. So, then, then I think then we can, we can absolutely move forward and as a priority as well.
So, as we go through the design, then, um, I'd just like to, I'm sorry, I'm talking to, I'm with my back to you, Paul, but I'd like to know what it is you're planning to do at Heritage Park simultaneously with what the design will be for this park, so we understand what facilities we have where, and we're not doing it in a vacuum.
Uh, generally speaking, Heritage Park has had a tremendous amount of improvements over the last couple of years. We, we do wanna continue those improvements, we're looking at um... We're looking at shades over the bleachers.
I don't know if that's an option for the Main Street Park. I just, just the two parks to plan together so we know what, what we're going to have in both of them, that's all.
And I agree with you and like last time, there was construction being done at Heritage Park and then all the other parks were being ceded, so we didn't have any parks for a while. So yeah, I'm with her, just we can plan that out a little better.
I just want, when are they planning to start the bathrooms at Heritage?
Great question, councilmember Neil. The contract was just signed last week. We have that somewhere in process and late stage procurement and we'll be ready to have our pre-con meeting with the vendor here coming up. We should have it done by the first of July.
Paul, on that maintenance building shop, what is the ETA? I mean, what, what's, can you just give us a little update on how that's looking and moving in or?
Sure. Generally, generally speaking, the, the county is utilizing that, that space now until their facility is built. So we don't have a finalization date on when we would move in. What we want to do in advance is with this design is to design a full service utility yard and complex for, for parks with, with material bays, with areas to park vehicles, safe spaces, shaded areas, and really make, make our equipment last longer. So I think with coming up with the best use of that space, that's our starting point.
You referring to until they build their big building where the court facilities sit?
I'm referring to the area next to the Main Street Park that was purchased with the ADOT property.
I know that. I mean, you said the county's going to be in there until their new facility is built, the one that they're going to demolish or the old courthouse buildings and build?
I actually don't have that information.
Actually, I believe that was the facility they're moving out on bowling. I think that, that facility is on bowling for, for their maintenance yard, I believe.
No, no, the county facility.
It's on bowling.
Okay. All right. I thought you meant the county facility, the new one.
No, yeah, no.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, can I just ask Paul, so when you're talking about the facility, will you be moving the storage containers out of Heritage Park over to the new facility?
The plan is the storage containers at Heritage Park will be sent to their grave. They, we have multiple issues with containing and securing those. They're aged out and we need to replace them. With discussion with town manager, we want to, we want to have a better look than a storage container though. So we'll be looking at sheds and that type of thing.
Great, very good. Thank you, sir.
Next department is fire.
I think we've all saved it for this one. I think all of our comments.
Good evening.
All right. Do we have any questions for the chief?
The only question I have, and it's actually just a disagreement, but I don't mind if, personally, I've, I've done a lot of research on this item number one, including talking to the fire chief from Mesa, who's recently bought five and they're proposing to buy five again this year. Doing some research online, looking at what they're asking for here, talking even to some of our firefighters. If we can't find grant funding, I truly believe we should buy at least one of these with our funds. Because I do believe that it's needed for our firefighters. This is not something they will do while on duty. I've been told by some of the firefighters, this is something they will have to come in and do when they're off time. But it does help and I've, like I said, I've talked to different fire departments about it. And apparently this is big going around the nation and you're going to see more of them. So I understand there is some grant opportunities, talking to our grant writer today. But should we fail, I think we should buy at least one set to probably be put in Fire Station Two where they have the room for it, definitely. That's my opinion.
I would agree with that because I know last year they had two on there and I think that was the hang up was two, or two needed. But I would say I would be okay with one and that could be utilized by all of them. That would be justifiable more than two.
Can we try it first?
So would we, Carl, then if we was to, so that's in the budget, right? So it's allotted at sixty thousand dollars, but it does say grant funded, but it's not just contingent on that, it's in the budget.
It's in the budget as a grant purchase, but if directed, we could move that into a capital fund.
Okay. Is, is that kind of, because I, I do believe in the grant process and I do believe that there is a lot of grants for this right now specifically, that, that, you know, that the firefighter health is, is always number one right now and leading. So I, are we in agreement that we would put one as regular budget and then still seek a grant for the second one?
I'm all for, I'm all for trying to see if you can get grant money for one. If you get grant money for two, good, but if you can't get any grant money, then I say we procure one set.
Well, I think, I, I think that there's, it's going to be hard just to do one or the other trying to get grant for two. I think that to do it correctly, that we move, we purchase one and then go grant money for the second one. So, and because we may not know for some time if we get grants for two or one or whatever they get on that. So if it's a strong feeling that we move forward with one, then I think tonight we would make sure that in the budget, it's one and then one grant funded. Is that a thought?
How, how many people can utilize that? Like what, what's the go time in between, I guess is what I'm asking.
Chief, can you just clarify a little bit on that for the, the process of utilization? When, why, how of these units?
Yeah, so the, the wind really can be any time, but they, they like to focus on specifically after internal structure fires. That's one of the biggest focus to get rid of the carcinogens that would enter the body through the skin. So that is one of the times that it could be utilized on duty. But there is a cycle of going through that because you have to spend roughly fifteen to twenty minutes cycling through the three different stages and then showering afterwards. At any point in there, if it were being utilized on duty, they're still able to respond to emergencies, they would just get interrupted into the process.
But I guess the question was, is this one at a time? I mean, would it be advantageous in the event of a fire emergency to have two because there would be more than one firefighter that would need to?
Well, the, the advantage of having it at the stations where the firefighters are is each local crew could utilize the equipment. You could have up to three people at a time in there because there are three stages, but the reality of it is, is you want to progressively work through the process. So one person could start, move to the next phase, somebody else could come in and start, you know, that type of process.
Thank you, Mitch.
And thank you for clarifying that because they're, because they will be used on duty. You know, and, and that's the whole idea of getting in there as quick as you can, getting through that process. So wanted to make sure. So, all right, back to the question.
Just real quick, so is that the reason we have two on here for one for each station?
I'm sorry, but the question is.
One for each station?
That was the original request, yes.
Okay. So they do need one per station.
So they need two.
At least.
So we'll move the sixty thousand dollars into the budget and we will continue to seek a grant for a second one.
Yes.
What, what generally, is there a time that we'll evaluate that? And I know that you don't know as far as grant, grant opportunities opening, closing and awarding, and I do understand that, but also to want to drag it out too long. Should we have a date that we take a look at this and, and see where we're at with the grant processes?
Yes, sir. I would probably suggest we look at it probably about, I'd say a six month timeframe. And I, of course, I don't think I'd really have too much of a problem allocating. This is a lot of research done on this, both on the police and the fire side. And yes, sir, this would be done while they're on duty because we don't know when a mental type of thing is going to go ahead and occur, when a firefighter or a police officer needs to go ahead and recharge. Police departments all around the state are putting those in, in place as well, so.
I was about to say, hopefully the police could go over and use it. But I do know the new business out on two eighty-seven, I think she's putting in three rooms with this capability.
She is, and she's also potentially looking to contract with us to go ahead and do that as well. We all went and took a look at that, but I would not be opposed to at least having one that we would go ahead and budget for our firefighters.
Okay. So let's then, I guess the direction, Carl, is to move one into regular budget and then one grant funded. And then we'll let the chief decide which, where he wants to put it. So any other, any questions for the chief? Okay, I've got a couple. So, and they're very easy and I'm pretty sure I know the answers. So when we're talking the storage facility, that is the building next to Station Two?
So yes, the original idea was to utilize the metal building that was next to Station Two. Actually, excuse me, that was the secondary idea. Originally, we were going to add on to the bays at Fire Station One, but there were questions about whether or not it was in a floodplain and questions about the engineering on the roof. So we moved to, to the metal building. The metal building, we were asked, there were some other town needs that, that superseded this idea, so we've regrouped and looking at now building a new metal building to the east of Station One.
Okay, very good. So, so a whole new building there. But we're still utilizing, we're still going to fix up the metal building that's out there. Last thing I heard, new slab fencing and all of that stuff. And I think there was, I think that was some of the, was a concern with some of the storage, you know, for apparatus or whatever that was. So I guess that's where we got to the new building.
Yeah, that's correct. And then some town needs, we were asked to pause on the metal building next to Station Two for other needs.
Okay. So when it says carryover from, from twenty-five, so that's the five hundred thousand?
Yes. So that was what was approved in last year's CIP and with the delays in the project, we won't be able to complete that this fiscal.
Okay. So are we, are you still good with the, the five hundred thousand dollars on that as far as I know?
I believe so. I believe we are, yes.
Tony?
I was just going to say, council, because Kathy and I, when we were discussing, we didn't want to see a bunch of CIPs on here again that didn't get done in the year there. So.
I appreciate that.
You're seeing pretty much things that hopefully will get done.
Yeah, no, I had no question. I just wanted to make sure that that's what that was and we're covered there at, at that. And then item eight, your training facility. So, and I know that kicks it out quite a bit. Are we talking to any, are there any developers? I know that the developers have been talking about fire station locations, that kind of thing. Have, has this ever come up with possible training sites? And I know at one time, and I know it, it's a joint training facility with police and fire. Has there been any talks with any of our developers as far as properties set aside or anything up to this, up to this time?
No, there has not been. No effective conversations have been established about doing a training facility anywhere in the town of Florence.
Okay. Thank you on that. So that's something that we need to make sure and keep our eyes open for if we've got some developers. So the, the final thing I've got is sixteen, the CERT rehab replacement, is that for the box truck?
Yes, sir.
So it seems, huh? Yeah, so it seems like, I don't know if that thing can go till twenty-eight. I mean, the, we're talking about a CERT team that, your CERT team is amazing and with sixty members or whatever that is, and we start talking about giving our, making sure our employees have furniture, have the right office stuff, their computers, these are volunteers. And so I actually believe I'd like to see that moved up. I, I don't know what that does to things here, but I think it's needed from what I see out of it. And, and again, we're, now we're working with volunteers and now we're giving them stuff that's not real good to work with and I know some other things. So I would like to see that moved up. What does that do to things, Carl? Chief, do you have an opinion on, on that comment? I mean, I mean, is this something that sooner than later would benefit the program?
Well, yes, obviously the request is hopefully to benefit the program, but as with anything, you know, it needs to fit within the town's budgetary priorities.
That was, that was very good. Now, Ezra, do you think that this needs to be done right? You need to then right now? Can we, can we do this right now? Carl, can we, yeah?
Yes, we can fund that out of the capital fund, but when this item came before us, we did reach out to the fleet to get his assessment of the vehicle and he thought it would do another year or two, but not going to argue with.
Do we, have we ever come up, do we have a fleet white paper that we go on? Do we have a fleet analysis that we?
We, we have a, what do I call it, Becky?
We have a fleet policy.
Policy based on.
Right. Better, okay. I, I think I would still like to see that moved up.
I agree with you. They don't ask for much and they don't need much. And I think if, even if we utilize that other vehicle for another couple of years, I mean, great to have another one too. I mean, even the carts they were using when they took us on the tour, pretty broken down and, but I agree with you.
Yeah, they're only, they only get budgeted three thousand dollars a year, CERT. They don't get a lot of money.
I think the least we can get them is some decent stuff to work with.
And I agree, we should consider buying a handicap golf cart where they can put wheelchairs on it, even if we're running them to events downtown, you know, to move people because those carts are pretty bad out there at Country Thunder. But we did think there would be a use in town possibly with, with our events, moving handicap people.
I agree with that too. And you think of all the money they save us because they are volunteers. So I think if, you know, we're doing ADA compliant sidewalks and, you know, we're saying that we're all these compliant in our city, then we should probably, you know, back that up. But I, I do agree. I, I think a truck, a box truck, a new one, wouldn't be a lot to ask. They don't ask for much, three thousand dollars for volunteers.
So and can then we look at, let maybe mid-year or something, start looking at the possibility of, of whatever golf cart or whatever that is in addition to some of their needs?
It should be noted that the carts are county owned carts. Those are not CERT carts. The town doesn't own those carts. And there is some questions that have come up the last couple of years with the county who utilizes a taxi service at Country Thunder, of them potentially taking over all of the transportation out there. So I just want to caution, we're not certain we're going to be out there again next year at this point.
Okay, yeah. And then, and that's understandable. So, so what you're saying is we should get the county to get us better carts to use out there, so I'm all about that.
But I would just like it to be looked at, could we use one here in town?
Yeah.
We do have a side by side that we can make. I'm just kidding. It was Joe.
All right. So I think we'll look at that. So anybody else have any comments about that, moving that over into this year? Okay, sounds like that. Carl, if we can do that, please. That's all the questions I had, chief.
Thank you.
Yeah, gotcha. The next department we have is the general government. These are items that. Uh, the next department we have is the general government. Um, these are items that don't belong to one specific department. I'll go over them. Uh, we have thirty-five thousand for a new curtain here in the chamber. Uh, five hundred thousand for, uh, building improvement and land contingency. Um, then we have three signs. Um, these are, uh, Jeff's signs. If you have questions, uh, he can.
I do. Can you stop right there?
You bet.
I remember sitting at this time last year and Johnny said, "We've been asking for these signs for years." They budgeted them and here it is, a year later, and not one has been put up. I was hoping we could get the one in front of the Pinellas County Museum at least, but, uh, please tell me, because we have not seen a design come back for final approval. Hopefully, Bruce, we can move these where it's going to get done next year. I hope so.
So, yes, sir, to go and answer your question. Um, I think that, uh, the project, uh, person that's working that is getting ready to go and come back to council, uh, with a couple of, uh, places that, um, that person believes would be good to go and showcase those, uh, signs. I believe one is what you just suggested. And then we may be delayed on the other, just, uh, trying to go ahead and figure out what is going to be the best place to go and place those signs. Uh, that person, I'll let him go and speak to, he's waiting to go ahead and chop at the bit here a little bit, but has been working on.
Can I add something to?
Yes, ma'am. But that person has been working on to go ahead and, and come up with a couple of places. We're running into right-of-way issues and some other stuff like that. So we just want to make sure that we have some, uh, good places for council to go ahead and discuss where to place those signs. Yes, ma'am, I apologize.
That, that's okay. You're good. What about the lighting when you're coming up to eighty-seven? Where it says Town of Florence, no light. When's that gonna happen?
Yeah. So that is getting ready to go and happen there pretty soon. We just finished up with, uh, placing the, the, uh, solar lights along all the town buildings. So the next stage is to go ahead and, uh, put lights out there on Florence, uh, side. But that's going to be a different model than what we're currently looking at because that sign is much bigger than the sign. So, um, the project manager on that has just been going around trying to find what's going to be best, what's going to be durable out there. Um, and we'll go ahead and showcase the, uh, Town of Florence. Jeff, I'll let you go ahead and take from there, but I think we're pretty close.
Question about the roundabout, where the big Town of Florence is. Is there power in that, in that roundabout?
No, sir.
So you can't put low voltage?
We have, we have capability to go and grab power, but we're gonna end up having to cut up that street to go ahead and bring it there.
Yeah.
So we're looking at a, a more economical, um, solar version.
Yeah. Okay.
I'll let Jeff go and speak a little bit on that, boss.
You know what? That is correct, uh, manager Walls. We are looking at a solar solution for the roundabout monument sign. That would be very similar to the solar solution that is currently providing light to the Main Street Extension sign. So something with a solar collector and some lights that are out there. And so we are, um, I was just talking with Floresco about that today. And so we are looking to get that in, uh, this fiscal year, uh, ideally. Well, before June thirtieth at a, at a maximum, but we are, uh, moving forward and, and getting some technical specs with Floresco. So we do not have a timeline as of today, um, but I should have one very soon for you.
And, and so when Jeff talks about, we don't have a specific timeline, we do have a absolute date that that is going to be completed. And, uh, we're working hard to go and get that completed this budget cycle. I think you'll see that happen before we enter to the next budget cycle.
Uh, so I've only got one question about, um, before we go back to Tony about talking about, are we done with monument signs? Is that what it is? Okay. So the only question, uh, that I had is on the LOMAR, the North End Framework LOMAR. Is that a, is that a new phase or is that a continuation of the LOMAR that's presently being done? That's been put out to thirty and thirty-one?
I think that's a continuation, boss. We, uh, kinda, uh, pushed this out a little bit, I think, based on the conversations that we had with you all at that last meeting.
Okay.
We can move that up a little bit if you like.
Well, I think the conversation, and so I think this is a different project. This must be a little bit more of a different phase of that project because we are currently almost done with this, the, the next, or the phase we've been working on for the last five years, I believe. I don't think, is this the same phase or the same LOMAR? Because I thought we were getting very close. You can, we can follow up on that. Well, I know. And I don't know what the, the LOMAR that we've been working on, that we've got letters in, where, I thought we were expecting it very quickly. Yeah, let's, let's figure that out. I just was curious about that because I also think, and I know that we certainly have had this, this discussion about the North End Framework and, and Territory Square and everything else being so much, pretty much on the backburner. However, these LOMRs take a long time. And I wanted to make sure that we're not just putting that out there and dropping it mid, mid-application on that. So, and I don't, I don't think so. I think that we are either almost done with the one that we're presently in, um, and this might be another phase, but I may be wrong. So we'll, we'll look forward to seeing that. Yeah, I don't know. We can't see. All right, that's all I have. Tony, did you have something? Okay.
I just had a quick question. Um, some of the recommendations that we sent over to council from the ad hoc was about, um, the cemetery sign. It still says like Florence Cemetery, I believe, and I think we're going more towards the Florence Memorial Park or vice versa. But the signage is white and brown and pretty set off, and nobody knows that that's the way you get to the cemetery. So it's pretty confusing for people. So I was just gonna see if you guys are in the area of the rodeo grounds and the bark park and all that stuff, if you guys can kind of look at the cemetery sign and just see what you think. I know it's not budgeted. I know it's, it wasn't talked about, but it was in the recommendations for the signage.
Yes, council member Buchalato, that is something I am talking with ADA about. I believe that is an ADA sign out there. I do not know if that's a town sign or ADA or a B on the right-of-way. I need, I need to verify.
It looks handmade.
Oh. Yes, but that is another sign that we, that we understand there are, um, some opportunities to improve. Absolutely.
And I don't mean for this, I'm just in the future, like if we're gonna do the signs and, and go that route, maybe we could look at all the signs and see if they all need to be done at once instead of little by little and then adding things in later. Because that sign is pretty old, dated, and I don't even believe it. I think it says Florence Cemetery or vice versa. It needed to change.
Yeah, Councilman Buchalato, I can kind of jump in a little bit. Jeff has been working that, what the issue was, and that's not a, a dot sign. Uh, what the issue was, if we bring that sign a little closer, then we have to go ahead and get ADA permission. And that's what the holdup was on that. I think it is in design, isn't it, Jeff? Or we were looking at some designing for that sign, but trying to go ahead and push it closer to the railroad, uh, railroad, to the roadway, that's going to require ADA approval.
Yeah, that's correct.
Anyone else have any questions for Jeff or, okay. All right.
I do have one more. Since I got stuck on Attaway and I came across the Town of Florence sign on Attaway, I took a photo of it. It's pretty beat up. It's a thin sign and it's all crooked because of the wind. So hopefully we'll be able to get that, Jeff, on your, on your fix. So.
And thanks to council member Ben Sina, I seen it as well, the, the other day too. And, and he is absolutely correct. In my chauffeuring him around.
Absolutely.
Mr. Mayor, I think I had raised this the last time. I am going to again suggest that we should have a marketing strategy on what it is that we want to message with every single sign. Our wayfinding signs are horrific on Main Street. My, my point is, if you need a sign on Main Street to tell you there are shops, right, we need the signs to be outside of town. Uh, all of our signage is, it, it, they look like high school shop projects, right? So if we want to promote our town correctly, we ought to be looking at branding the town. And when you're looking at electronic billboard, what is the messaging you want to send? You cannot say too much on a moving billboard when cars are driving by. So there should be some thought given to who we're talking to, what we want to say, and what it should look like, and where the sign should be, right? There's some discussion, do we have welcome to Florence at the city limits? I don't know that tourists care, right? You want to have something closer to town and let them know, here's the shops and restaurants or whatever. But there ought to be a unified plan.
I agree with you, and I'll tell you this. They do notice signs because when that little billboard with the ninety-nine cent Whopper finally went away because the Whopper hadn't been ninety-nine cents in like ten years, they noticed. So they definitely noticed the signage in this town. And I definitely agree with you that to keep it uniform and simple, but nice.
As you said, every town facility should have a sign.
All right.
Uh, next department is IT.
Good evening, sir.
Did you, did you break something up there that now we have to put in the budget?
I need seventy thousand more dollars for a podium.
I see your motives up there. Is there any questions for IT tonight?
I've just got one because I have been through this and Kathy and I spent a lot of time on the three hundred and fifty thousand dollar bill there, but it's gonna be a nice phone system because ours is old. Uh, how many computers are we replacing a year under the three-year refresh?
Uh, so this year, council member Ben Sina, we have replaced seventy. By the end of the fiscal year, it should be seventy-five.
And, and how many total do we have?
Right now, we have two hundred and four. There's a hundred and seventy-eight, uh, in production right now because we're shifting some things around.
More than the employees we have?
You have a hundred, I think we have a hundred and fifty some odd, depending because it's seasonal. So you have additional computers that are workstations, kiosks, senior center, things like that, right?
So I got a question. So do you work hand-in-hand with the signage, anything up there that goes? No, I'm just asking. I know you guys are thinking the same thing. I asked a question. Is there anything up there for the signage that, that you guys work in hand, hand-in-hand with the IT and the signs?
Uh, no, not, nothing that I'd be aware of. Uh, it, it just depends on what type of signage we do. If we move to some sort of digital, uh, signage, uh, that needs to be programmed, then possibly. Was that the question?
Yes, sir. So I was just wondering where that would fall and where, where that would be up there?
Uh, I don't have any digital signage in my budget, if that's what we're asking.
So it'd be in the number three then, right? Okay, thanks.
Was the question, you said digital signage? What was the question? I'm sorry.
The question is, would IT have a part to play with the signage? Like informational signage? The electronic signs that Jeff just talked about?
Other than programming, possibly programming.
Typically, the way those work, sorry to answer, I wanted to make sure I was clear. So typically not. No, we wouldn't. That's, that's handled by whoever the signs are purchased through. It has basic programming that's done to it. It's something as simple as what we set up our, our slides over at the, the library. Any staff member could, could take a part in it. There really wouldn't be a huge part for my department that I could see, foresee. Unless we're talking major, big-time digital displays like you see at the casinos or something like that. I don't think there would be anything within my department.
All right, thanks.
Okay. Jeff says that's correct.
Yeah.
So, all right, Trent.
Very good.
Is he, is, council member Neil?
This is more of a general question. After laptops and computers get done with, do we sell them? Do we get some kind of money for them? I want to know that like across the board because we never see that in the books. If we're selling computers or if we're selling tables, desks, chairs, what are we getting for them?
Sure. Yeah. Excellent question, council member. So, yes, we do. So addition, in some cases, uh, they are put out to auction, uh, through the finance department. That's really rare nowadays. The machines really aren't worth the time and effort to do that. Um, what I like to do is look for something we can donate to the schools. Um, and we've done that in the past. It's been several years, but we actually have, uh, are going to have a surplus now, uh, with older machines. So we'll look at doing that. Um, they're offered for sale, uh, because we have to collect monies for them in some way, shape or form. We can't just give them away for free.
Got you. Um, on the computer, I'm being optimistic. On those computers, can we hold on to those in thoughts of a future teen center?
So, great question, council member. I actually do hang on to different devices and keep them running. We use them for various things around the town. Um, I'm a big advocate of that. As long as it's not sitting there collecting dust for no reason, as long as we're putting it to good action, we do so.
Paul, do we have them in, computers in there for the senior center so seniors can use them? Four, four of them? Okay, thank you.
Yes, we just replaced those, uh, comp, within the last three weeks, I believe, council member.
Okay. Anyone else have any other questions for Trent? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I would, I would say I would like for council to start getting a report on things that we get rid of, whether we getting any money back for it or not. I would, I would like to see that.
Council member, we do, uh, have a policy on disposals. And anytime we're going to be getting rid of anything, it has to come before council to be disposed of or to be asked to donate to someone or to go to public sale on it. So you will get that. And, and we do, um, it's a policy for every single department, irregardless of the dollar value, has to report into finance because those are public funds that they were purchased with. So we have to dispose of them publicly as well.
What about all the old vehicles? The ones lined up at Public Works in the back and then?
Same thing.
Police is gonna have, I'm assuming, once they get all their new vehicles in, some excess? Old ones?
Council member Ben Sina, we already have several, uh, vehicles already waiting over Public Works. And as for finance, uh, to go ahead and do an auction and go ahead and get rid of those vehicles, um, Andy is working on that, I think, as we speak right now. I think he just contacted Carl and Becky, uh, to get rid of those vehicles or auction those vehicles.
I did one day drive by Fire Station Two and, and, and I saw like five, uh, Florence police cars out there. And I go, you mean the whole damn department's up here? But you, you must have some storage up there.
So, no, what we do with Fire Station Two is we kind of alternate briefings. So sometimes our officers will brief out of the main station, or sometimes we'll go ahead and brief out of the north station. If they're driving old ones, it's new to me.
You couldn't fool everyone, but you fooled Tony by that. All right, very good. All right, moving on. Get us out of here, Carl.
Uh, next department is police.
Oh, he's taking that? I would have thought that, that the commander was gonna take this.
There you go, Rico. You're welcome. You know, you, 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 uh, Chief Thomas owes you for getting through this budget. See, just to make sure that he knows that, so. All right. Moving forward, does anybody have any questions? Council member.
For number eleven, the simulator. How long have you all had your pre, your previous simulator?
Uh, we, we got that donated from CAC, Central Arizona College, about three years ago.
Three years.
May I follow that up with, how updated is this new one over what you have?
So the new one, um, is state-of-the-art. Um, I will go ahead and say it's technology of now versus what we have. What we have now, again, was a donation and we kind of just took that on piecemeal, again, trying to go ahead and save money. Um, is it time, uh, for the police department to have something more state-of-the-art? They absolutely are. But again, we were just trying to be a little bit more. But again, we were just trying to be a little bit more prudent in this budget. Is it something that we can go ahead and piecemeal and make work, uh, for another year or so? Yes. But if there's an opportunity for the police department to get something more advanced, I would say that that would be a good idea to do.
I would just like to say that the sheriff's office had one and we utilize it very, very much. And it, it does a lot of training and.
Yes.
It is a great tool for any agency to have. And, and just kind of like, how do you guys not have one when those two, you know, do have one and, and?
Yes.
And I, I don't think it's a big ask and I, I just think it's, it's very, very good at what it does. Milo, is that, is that the kind of simulator?
That's what we're currently using as Milo.
Yeah.
This system.
Is the VR, yeah.
Yeah.
And I, it's, it's, even Milo is great, you know, state-of-the-art and you learn a lot from that, so.
Can, can we? Is it any way that we can get that for the police department now?
Well, uh, the one thing that's happening is, is you saw five and six, which is red dot rifles. That's possibly coming off and purchased this year, right?
So the red dots, um, we will go now those purchased by the end of the, by the end of this fiscal year, correct?
Yes, sir.
Uh, the rifles will end up going through a process. If we go into a bid process, I'm not quite sure that we can go ahead and make that happen before the end of the year because there's times now when you go through a bid process, that's a little different than a direct select. But the pistols, yes, sir, I think we can. The rifles, it would be pretty close.
The one good thing about the PD is they've, you guys utilize grants pretty much. A big chunk of your budget last year was all grant-funded. So I think when they finally come down and ask for something, it's because they couldn't find a grant for it.
Also have a question. So, um, Chief, so are we making sure, just like any other department, that when police are, are going through and, and looking, are we looking to, to see if we can shop local? If, if we have the opportunity, if they still come in before going and, and bidding it out or going sole source to a, to a different company outside?
The answer to that is yes. Now, in reference to, um, the red dots and the rifles, we're trying to go ahead and meet a timeline. So in trying to meet that timeline, yeah, we tried to go in direct source so that we could go ahead and meet, getting those in this fiscal year. But I don't have any problem with taking that back out and seeing if we can go in and, uh, maybe have someone more locally look at, uh, purchasing or getting the purchase for us.
Like I said, as liaison for the chamber, I love supporting our own and I love getting that, that revenue back into our revenue stream and supporting our own if we can and if it meets our, our time constraints.
Yes, sir.
Financially as well. They would try to look local, some businesses, but.
So did we clear, so procurement code, does it call for an up to ten percent for local? Okay. Alright, very good. And I think, and I, and I don't think, I know the town manager is aware and, and working toward that with our products that we're looking at.
So I'm assuming Councilman Bedford wants to move the simulator into this year. Carl, uh, is there funds to be able to move that to this year? If council agrees with it?
Um, yes, if town manager approves that, we definitely could move that forward.
Yes, come on, we can do it.
Yeah, so, and here's my deal on training, that that's a place that we don't put off if we don't need to, if we don't have to. By using this simulator, this takes a lo- place of a lot of hands-on with groups and which takes a lot of overtime, takes a lot of money. This is a money saver when you can do that. So I would absolutely agree on that. If that, if we could make that happen, I think that's what we're hearing. Councilmember Neil, you got something?
I'd just like to speak on the importance of the simulation. Uh, I've used it, trained with it. If you really want to see what an officer has to go through to make a split second decision to have to take someone's life or not, that'll put you as close as you can get. And that type of training, because honestly, most officers go their whole career without having even pulled a weapon. Thank God for that. But for those ones that do, number one, mentally what they have to deal with is nowhere near the actual having to do it. But in that simulation, I, I can tell, I've seen officers come out crying. I've seen officers quit because they don't want to do it, they don't have it. That is, that is important, that is needed, and I agree that we should definitely move that up.
And what I like about it, um, Councilmember Neil, when we went through our leadership academy and we went over to the police department, we got the opportunity to go through that simulation. That's why I said, that's something that we need. So, um, thank you, Carl, since you found some money.
So, I just.
Thank you.
Um, I just have something also to add on that. Lately, we've been having a lot of upticks and stuff, like, for example, that incident that happened at the Speedway a couple of weeks ago. And I was just wondering with this system, is there something where you can put certain scenarios to see how officers react? Like when you do an AAR, an after-action's report? So that way, if another officer were to encounter that same situation of what had happened there, how they would react accordingly? Is, is this something that that VR would do? And it, and the second part of that question is, is it, with that VR, does it also simulate the, um, like recoil? Is there like air hooked up to the, where, yeah, so those are my two.
Yeah, so with this system, you can build a, a variety of different scenarios, de-escalation, use of force. Um, and the, the pistols and rifles do recoil like a regular firearm. So you can do a lot of de-escalation, um, there, you can make the players within there reactive many different ways and it's interactive. So the one that's controlling the scenarios changes the reaction of the other players. But you can also use a, uh, another individual with, within the virtual reality space that you're talking to and it's interacting with you. So it's very lifelike. We, we had a few demos over at the library and it was very, very, uh, well-received by us and the officers.
Okay, anything else? I just got to ask, would, are you okay if council wants to move that over?
Yes, sir, I'm fine. And just, um, I just, you know, um, when we first started talking about this, we wanted to make sure that we kind of went with a flat, um, kind of budget. So when you saw the fire department and, uh, their little box and, and now this, I just want to make sure, you know, that we're kind of sharing in that, that equity of making sure that, uh, we kind of stay balanced. But, uh, I have no problem with either one of those issues.
Alright, is that it? Alright, very good. See, Commander, you've done a very good job.
And I'd like to have another chance to shoot because I went home crying that I killed the wrong people.
Did you, you hit the lady or the child? I knew.
Alright.
Uh, next department is streets. Um, Andy asked me to highlight these, you gonna address? No, no, go ahead. But Andy wanted me to point the Hunt Highway projects out.
Any questions?
I, I do want to, I found something out today because I do want to, twelve, the T-one-six. When Kathy and I saw it, it was about three million dollars, I think. Is this the one that got dropped to four hundred thousand? Carl, that you and I talked about today?
It was, uh, like seven point eight.
Seven point eight million and Andy got it down to one point five.
Well, he, he, his, his, Andy's recommendation is to take a different approach. That seven point eight was a, a total reconstruction of Hunt Highway. Uh, he's looking in that approach there to preserve the asphalt as opposed to remove and replace.
Hey AJ, real quick, you want to go and talk about, uh, T-one-one-six and what Andy did on that one as well?
Um, so, uh, T, uh, one sixteen, the intersection improvements at State Road seventy-nine and Hunt Highway. Uh, Andy's been doing a wonderful job, uh, coordinating, uh, with ADOT. Um, we are on now monthly meetings with ADOT to talk about projects and opportunities. Um, we've been working very closely with them on that project, um, to coordinate, uh, maybe an expediated permitting process. Uh, most of the improvements will be along Hunt Highway at that intersection. Um, however, we will be, you know, entering ADOT right away there. And, and they've promised to work closely with the town, uh, to expedite those reviews. And they're really happy that we're, we're, we're communicating with them and, and looking for opportunities.
And that specifically is a right-hand turn lane?
Yes, sir.
And I will tell you, when Kathy and I met with Bruce and, and Finance, uh, Becky was tickled very happy with the way Andy has budgeted out the money. To see her be happy on, especially on her funds, uh, was a good thing, so. Uh, alright, quite, any other questions then for AJ? Um, Councilmember Neil, are you, got a question? No, you just grabbed your, okay.
I, I have one question. The Centennial Park, Adamsville Road to two eighty-seven. I see that starting in twenty-seven. Is that fair to say? Number four. T forty-eight.
Yes, that's what it looks like. A design in fiscal year twenty-seven and then, uh, the one point million dollars would be used for the capital project. And I, and I, and I think some of it with the priorities that came out of the console and those lines, some of the larger projects that you see pushed forward.
Yeah.
Um, it had, that has a lot to do with that is the, the workload and sort of balance with existing staff. As you all know, we're, A- Andy's, you know, just set down. Um, we're also working to secure a senior engineer and project manager and so on and so forth. So I, I think that's why you see that moved out, Councilmember.
I, and I, and I'm not, I'm not against it. I just don't want us to forget about that because they currently just have the one entrance and exit. And it's a safety issue at some point. Not as bad as what's going on on Hunt and Adaway and all that. I agree. I just don't want it pushed out and forgotten about.
Well, and, and I was going to ask that as well. So this, uh, a- a- as we look at all of these projects, the exception of a couple, they are playing catch-up. Every one of them are playing catch-up that this stuff should have been done ten years ago or five years ago. The item four, um, that Nicole just was saying was, that's, this is our first opportunity to get something done before more expansion. And when we're talking Plant Road, we're talking CD Farms and everything else. So I, I second that, making sure that we don't, that we're not losing sight of that. Uh, and I do realize that even just moving it over the hundred thousand, I mean, we're, we're asking for a lot this year already with our Hunt Highway improvements or Adaway improvements. So I, I, I don't feel like that we should move it this way, but, but I am in full agreement. This is our, 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 this council's one shot at doing, actually doing something, uh, you know, thinking about it before it really becomes a problem. So, anyway, very good. That's only, I, I, that's the only questions I have, it's pretty explicit, explanatory.
I know we're on the budget and I don't mean to add nothing to an already horrible road system, but I haven't seen anything for seventy-nine. Seventy-nine coming from McDonald's going toward Hunt is absolutely horrible. Have we even spoke of that? I know, I ain't trying to get on nothing new, but just a question.
No, Councilmember, good question. Um, so again, we've had those monthly meetings with ADOT. There looks like there's some development looking at the southwest corner of Hunt and Arizona seventy-nine. That, that project, that intersection is on ADOT's radar, um, but it's not on the fun, it's not on the funded sheet. It's on a radar. That, that's going to take us, I think collectively as a community, working, uh, through ADOT to make sure that that project rises up, uh, well beyond radar and onto a, onto a schedule. The, the improvements that we're making, uh, in the T-one-one-six project won't have any adverse effect on what future or what future improvements would be made on seventy-nine. But those conversations are ongoing and I think maybe now it's the time, if, if we think it's important, to kind of encourage ADOT to move that project up the, up the list.
Because I, I know when council had did, we were talking about the bridge. We screamed and hollered for ADOT to make that four lanes. And ADOT, and, and they told us, in a month, it probably could call for four lane. But that, right now, it's two lanes, so we won't do it. So we begged them to do four lanes so we can do seventy-nine on out, but just want to keep that one because it's going, it's, it's going to be a major problem here in a minute. You can't even get out of the courthouse or the facilities anymore. I have to drive around the sheriff's department to get to the light to get out of there.
I just wanted to say collectively, good job. So excited to see these finally on paper and, and budgeted. So I know I said something about, you know, the Centennial Park, I just don't want it to be forgotten. And, and, but really good job to everybody involved and getting these funded.
And I appreciate that and, and, and that's what it's been, Councilmember. It's been a team effort. As you know, a lot of people have picked up and, and, and are trying to move these different projects forward. So I'll make sure that that's passed on to the team that couldn't be here tonight. You're welcome.
I, I even recommended that, once we pass the budget, that we let the residents know on these roads what our plans are, so.
I also have a question. So on that T-one-oh, T, number five, T-zero-six-nine, pavement preservation within town limits, does that include like downtown Main Street, like those really big cracks that you can really hurt yourself on?
Yes, that, that's, that's sort of a continuation of, of the project. It's the, uh, T-one-nineteen project is that would be on our local street, local streets here in town. Uh, you see the preservation effort that was done on First, um, over the last couple of weeks. Um, you would be see, you'd see projects targeted like that in, in town.
Alright, thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I ask you something? Are we doing that? Are we doing it? Because I know we have this cement truck.
We, um, the, the forces do some of the work of that. The work you saw on First and some of the work that's been taking place up in Anthem, that's, that's outsourced. That's a contractor performing that work for the town.
Okay.
So I think the way it was explained to me, uh, the cement truck is mainly for when we have the water main breaks and there has to be a lot of cement poured into the.
Okay.
But I will say that they have been using around town, if you've noticed, the sidewalks are getting fixed.
Yes.
Monthly.
Yes.
Have those stupid little A-frame things blocking the sidewalk for months and months. So my hat's off to Public Works is doing a great job.
Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Are you staying up there for the next one too?
Let's, let's see.
It was just a question, AJ, I didn't. I don't see anybody jumping up to come bail you out, so I think it's you as well. Including Bruce. Since he's staying, since he's staying, could you explain the new well at number six? Just kidding.
Alright, so I've got one thing, uh, on here, question. I've already, I've kind of asked, I've talked to Bruce about this and, and so, uh, one of the, the main things and, and the reason that item one looks like it is is because it was a request of mine, um, to, to somewhere along the line, start being proactive instead of reactive to all the broken lines. And so this was it. So my question though for this year, because now we've, we are finding ourselves needing a new, another and we're getting close, I believe, to getting another utility director. And so I understand that the way it was set up before was eighty thousand one year, sixty, six hundred thousand the next year and the eighty thousand was for engineering. So my question is, by having the six hundred thousand this year instead of an eighty, is this, is it feasible? And we go back to the direction that the, uh, Budget Committee, uh, was given and Council has given, is it just not throwing numbers out there just to see if we can get it done or not? And so is it realistic by just being hiring and another utility director, giving them timed on? And so is it realistic by just being hiring and another utility director, giving them time to on, get on, i- is it really realistic for us not to look at an engineering for this year and then putting, putting it off one more year? You know, cuz it just seems like, I mean, they're six hundred thousand dollars, that's a, that's a lot of money, and I realize that we still have to be reactive, and I still know that we're still gonna be reactive. If it costs us six hundred thousand anyway for being reactive, we're still gonna pay it. But when, when we're setting down here and we're, we're throwing down numbers, like five, you know, five million dollars total here for this fiscal year, that if we was to take, take the eighty thousand from '29, move it to this year, and then move everything back down, the six hundred thousands down, and then, and give, and give that a shot. Cuz I, I really, in my heart, don't believe that we're gonna have a year that we can really be super proactive by bringing on new staff, trying to get used to what we've got going.
So is that four years of six hundred after the eighty?
Yes. Yeah, does that, does that make sense? I mean, Carl, are you, I mean, realistically, and AJ and Bruce, please weigh in, but it just seems like to me, my gut is telling me that I don't know that we're gonna get that done and be that proactive this year.
I don't know how close we are to having our new water director, but I would have a question as to, for me, living downtown, if we can even get one shut-off valve, someplace, it's worth it to me. I get it's not the whole plan, it's not strategic, and, and he won't have a chance to get his, his, or her, feet on the ground, I don't know that it's he. Um, but, um, I don't wanna give that up, Mr. Mayor, until that person has a chance to come in and look and do something.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and what I would say to this is, six hundred thousand, I think is probably a little much, I think if we back that down maybe to an eighty or a hundred thousand, that still allows, uh, for the new utility director to come in and go ahead and do some of those things. And I think much of it, you're right, we probably will be reactive, but I do think that there's some proactive activity in there that we can go ahead and do. Mind you, we are still, uh, we may be close, uh, to getting a utility director, but that has not been.
I think that, um, so every time the water main breaks, it costs us a lot of money, right, because overtime and everything else, so if we have that, I, I know you don't wanna plan for breaks, but maybe we have that covered, but I'm fine backing off of not use the whole six hundred thousand.
Right, and, and I think that was my, my thought as well, that we were still gonna have in there for still replacement, and, and, but I also think that during one of our reports, that with the valve exercisers and the va, and the different valves that we're replacing already, kind of has helped the situation that we would have, that we would be shutting down the whole town. Is that, was that kind of, yeah. So I, I think things are better anyway, because of what we've been doing since then. But no, you're absolutely right, and, and I think they're still, unfortunately, we're faced with a little, with proactive, or reactive anyway, you know, when we start talking about some of this stuff, so, no, a- absolutely, and I think that that, and, and that was my question, is the eighty thousand moving that, is that enough to put in there, is it something that we should look at? Councilmember Bencina?
The six hundred thousand would be rollover money anyway, right? It doesn't go away like a, like budget. You, that six hundred thousand, if we don't spend it all this year, it just rolls over, right?
Well, and, and it could be still, still, so if we look at a midterm, and I think with the, with the new, um, committee, that we are gonna be doing regular reviews of all of these, these, you know, quarterly reviews, and it could be, you know, spending, so the money is there. The money is gonna be there in the pile somewhere, but I just wanted to make sure that when, when we're looking at it, when we're looking specifically at this one. Uh, and that was my, my thing, I, I think it just seemed like it, I don't know if the eighty thousand is enough to, to make sure to do what the Vice Mayor's talking about, just in case, of, of how proactive that we are getting, or we just leave it like it is?
But at least it's there if you need it, like, we hope we don't need it, and if we don't, it rolls over. But if we do, it's there, because, you know, as the past couple of years have shown, we've utilized our funds.
It gives us a little comfort level, too, to actually approve the additional fire and police budget line items that we just said, so it's a good thing, it's good, we're good.
Okay, no, that was, and that was my question, if, if we were being so.
I say just leave it as is, since it's money that rolls over anyway, it can roll over if we do not use it.
Leave it as is.
We get a great utilities director, and Kathy pounds on him, he'll, uh, he'll get some stuff done.
No, that's, that's fine with me, no, I just, that was the question I had, with that's what we thought we might do, so, perfect, thank you, that's all the question that I had.
Last department.
Good job, good, good job AJ. Oh wait, AJ, it's a, AJ, could you go over each one of these for me, please? Actually, I think a lot of this, even though we funded it, uh, we're funding it, is dependable on our new utility director telling us we're gonna need it, so.
S- some of those pro, if I, if I may, um, some of those projects are ongoing projects, right? So, um, we just brought on board the designer for project number three, SU-84. Um, so that is in design right now, um, and you know, that's part of the work that the town of Florence needs to complete. Um, the south wastewater treatments, uh, plant headworks project, SU-88, um, is currently under construction. Um, so some of these projects are committed to projects that we have going on. Yeah, um, SU-112, the chlorine contact chamber, these are all projects that are taking place right now. SU-113, basin number four, same thing. Um, yeah, all of those projects, um, are ongoing projects right now, and, and there's a lot of investment, uh, being made, specifically the south wastewater treatment plant this year, and as you know, there's a lot of work, um, to, uh, to decommission the north wastewater treatment plant. We have our, uh, CMAR contractor, um, continuing to work on the north wastewater treatment plant. Um, and, you know, we're looking at early GMPs to move that project forward, so, um, yeah, there's a lot of work going on.
I ju, I just had a comment.
Yes, sir.
So I'm hoping that when folk, when the customers see all this right here, and they ask, when the rate study's being done, and they ask why, I hope they, they know this is a big chunk of why.
And it's up to us to explain it to them. Because, in full transparency, like, this needs to happen, we all need to have this, and it's something you just can't get away from.
Okay, anything else on wastewater? Nothing? Okay, we have nothing. AJ, you wanna go over the budget calendar for us? Since you're up there?
So I'm gonna recap, um, the fire sauna restart, recharge station, we're gonna move one into general, we're gonna leave one into grant funding. The CERT vehicle, we're moving that forward to next year. Um, bathrooms down at Main Street Park. We're gonna do the design this year, and we're gonna put a hundred and twenty-five thousand for bathrooms, if they can get it done this year. Uh, police VR training is gonna be this year. And I, uh, the levy's gonna stay what we have, number one, and, uh, four percent for merits.
So, Carl, Carl, I think so, when we were talking about, and something slipped my mind, I was gonna make this comment, when we were talking about the chief's, um, saunas, is that, cuz we, we had a lot of discussion on that, so, uh, the comment I was gonna say before I seen something shiny, uh, or a squirrel, was that I don't have a lot of confidence in our, our federal grant funding right now. Uh, anything in Homeland Security, or which would, where that would, that would all come from. Um, and so my thought process was there, was to put both of those into this budget. Is that, so I'm throwing that out to council. I mean, we can still search for, for grants over there, but a- again, I, I don't have, because I, I do know what's going on in the fire scene and in the public safety scene with federal funding, I don't have a lot of confidence that that money's gonna come through.
Uh, Matt, the, uh, grants coordinator, he started looking, I think a couple of weeks ago, is that correct, Matt, for a, a grant? And I know Fire Station One, the, they're gonna put in a new shower, and part of that shower bathroom remodel is putting a hookup for this, if they decide to go, so we do have time. Um, if we put them both in general capital fund, and we find a grant
Yes.
before they're done.
Okay, all right, I think, so that's still, it's still the direction. So we're, we, we were moving them both into general capital, but then we were gonna still continue to, to research what we could do. And then we'll let, we'll let the manager decide what to do on that. Okay, very good. Yes.
Um, that's it for the budget presentation. Knocked it out in one night. So, we'll cancel tomorrow's meeting and Thursday's.
So you mean I don't get overtime? And no, and no dinner tomorrow night, so I guess we're. Okay, then to, uh, further going, let's call, it's call to council, item, we'll go back into here, call to council, item number five. Councilmember Bedford, do you have anything for call to the council?
This was a great meeting. Meeting of the minds. That's it.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Bencina?
Uh, I don't have any, I appreciate everybody rushing through tonight, don't wanna go line by line on the others, so Kathy and I did that. Um, and spent some good time with, with everybody. Um, so I appreciate everybody getting through tonight and, and making your comments and seeing what's been done. I appreciate the town limiting, so we don't have a lot of CIPs out there that won't get done. Uh, and hopefully we can get done what's planned and, and make some big improvements in the next year, so, thanks.
All right, thank you. Councilmember Maldonado?
I just wanna say thank you for this book, because it was a lot easier to read than the one last year. And like having, like here, look, this is the breakout, this is where you go for this. Like, you guys actually listened to us last year, uh, on, like, making this way easier for us.
Uh, Carl is amazing, Carl and Carolyn are amazing at doing stuff, so they get all the kudos for this.
All right, Councilmember Bucelada?
I just wanted to say thank you to the finance team for working with council to get this done. I know this was done different this year, but I had full faith in these two to nitpick before I had to. So it was nice, it was nice to come through and know that, you know, extra set of eyes were already on it, not, not that anything was ever thrown out to us. You guys have been very transparent, very great every year. I do like the new book as well, I did see all the changes that you made from last year, it was easy to go, it wasn't like a PowerPoint, it was kind of broken down. And those of us not in finance, we appreciate that, cuz I don't know some of those terms sometimes, I'm just gonna say that, but I think everybody did a great job, and, and Bruce, I see you, I know you had to go through all this too, and I know you had to say no, yes, no, and I think you did a really good job. So I just wanted to say to all the directors, finance, kudos to you guys, proud of you, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Neil?
Pretty much the same thing, cuz I remember the first year I was on council, I think I had three of these books this size, and we took about two weeks to talk about the budget. And every year it's gotten better and better and better, and this is, man, I mean, this is a fraction of what we had two years ago. Um, so, man, great job, everybody, that's wonderful, um, let's go home.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Adam?
Well, I, I wanna say I think a lot of this has to do with leadership, we have given the kudos to the staff, which I cannot say enough about. This finance team is unbelievable, but I think having our town manager in place, who, let me tell you, even above Tony, who is, did an excellent job going through this, our town manager knew every line item, he knew what was going on in every apartment. And when finance and the town manager spoke to us, we didn't question it, right, Tony? We had questions because we didn't understand it. But there was never a question about credibility, or that it hadn't been researched, or due diligence, or that it was needed. So we're already starting from a place of much higher, uh, respect and trust. Uh, and, and our mayor directing this and having the Budget Committee resurrected, um, I give you a lot of credit for that. I think that this time next year is going to be entirely different, because when I look at this right now, particularly on our priorities, the public, uh, works and the wastewater treatment plants, when I look at the streets, I have no doubt that those capital improvement projects will get done this year, right? Whereas, when I first came to council, we were constantly rehashing, rehashing, what, where is this? This will be done, and we will move on, and the, the other important priorities like Centennial, et cetera, Felix, we will start to see them move forward because we have project management and we have good executions. Uh, kudos to everybody, it's been a great process.
Thank you. So finally, I can't, uh, just repeat what everybody else has already said, too, so staff, Carl and Carolyn and Becky, your, your whole team has, has done amazing things, and Bruce, for sure, and this committee that we decided to breathe some new life in, uh, and putting these two specifically on that committee, um, there, there was a thought process that went in there to put the two bulldogs on there, that wasn't gonna miss anything. And I, I did, there was more than one time, and I say that in a good way, bulldogs. Um, so there was more than one time I was in the office, in my office, and I would look into the, the window of that room when these two were in there with everyone, so I had all the confidence in the world that, that the whole team was getting everything done, so, and, and, and that shows. Uh, and I also wanna thank this council, so we are seven members, we are, um, many times don't think exactly the same, which is what makes us work, and, but tonight also shows what makes us work, is that we're all after the same thing, and what's better for, best for the town, so with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I just wanna say one thing, I did freak out, Bruce, this morning, he called me, and I said, Bruce, I have a lot of tabs. And he goes, what? I said, some numbers have changed, so Carl and I got on the phone, and, and Carl justified what happened to all the numbers, so, anyway. And there you go, that's why, that's why that works, so, all right.
I make a motion to adjourn.
We have a motion to adjourn, we have a second. All right, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed, all right.